Afternoon, folks. I'll call the February 7, 2023, closed session meeting. Madam City Clerk, would you kindly read the instructions on how the public can participate this afternoon?
Thank you, Mayor. The public can participate in the live meetings here in chambers, or they can access the video at fullerton.legistar.com or on our government cable channels. They can also address City Council by either registering to speak in the city manager's office, which is next door here to the council chambers. I'll also remind people they have materials to distribute to City Council. They should provide those copies to the staff at the time they are registering to speak, and staff will call the names of those registered to speak when it's their turn to address City Council. If someone would like to comment via Zoom, they can do so by calling 1-669-900-9128 and enter Zoom meeting ID 978-4219-1797, or they can go right online at zoom.us/join using the same meeting ID. And because I went through that fairly quickly, the full instructions are available on the website with the agenda.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Mayor Jung.
Present.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Dunlap and Councilmember Charles are not yet present.
We will now hear public comment on closed session items. Seeing no one in chambers, we'll move over to Zoom.
No one in Zoom.
Very well. We'll recess to closed session. Good afternoon, folks. Good evening. I call the February 7, 2023, regular session to order. Madam City Clerk, please give the public instructions on how they might participate this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. The public can access the live meetings at fullerton.legistar.com or on our government cable channels. They can address City Council in person or virtually by joining the Zoom meeting online or by telephone. To address City Council in person, register to speak in the city manager's office, which is the room right next door here to chambers. If you have materials you would like to distribute to City Council, please provide seven copies to staff in the city manager's office when you register to speak, and they will distribute them for you. Staff will call the name of those registered to speak when it's your turn to address City Council. If you are joining on Zoom, you should go to zoom.us/join, or you can call 1-669-900-9128, and the Zoom meeting ID is 978-4219-1797. And since I ran through that quickly, the full instructions are on the agenda on the website.
Very well. Thank you for that. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Jung.
Present.
Mayor Protam Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Here.
Councilmember Charles.
Here.
And Councilmember Zara.
Here.
My name is Father Dave Otto. I'm from the church right across the street, St. Mary's. And I'm not the pastor, I'm the parochial vicar, just real briefly that. The pastor couldn't make it tonight. He's like the head honcho, the guy in charge. I'm his second-in-command, so I'm here to lead us in prayer, get us going. So I'm not going to give you a long homily, long sermon, but I'll keep it short and sweet. But we always start everything that's good with prayer. So we begin, "Dear Almighty God, we pray that we will have a productive meeting today. We pray that we will be able to discuss and tackle the important things we need to tackle and be efficient in handling those things. We also pray that you give us the grace to come up with the best possible and morally right solutions that would best benefit the people we serve. As we gather in your name, may we temper justice with love, so that all our decisions may be pleasing to you and earn the reward promised to good and faithful servants. Amen. And may Almighty God bless you all, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen." Did you want me to? Any questions?
Thank you for that.
Honorable Mayor.
Father Otto, would you be kind enough as to give us a little update on how St. Mary's Church is doing?
Sure. St. Mary's, if you don't know, is right across the street. It's one of three Catholic parishes in the city of Fullerton, and we're doing pretty well. We have a new pastor, Father Steve Correz. And I know we have to talk with the city a little because we have our new bells, and so we want to make sure they're not too loud. But people have been saying good things about them, but I guess some people might not be. So we've got to balance that, like all good things. But our church is welcome to everybody. We're a Catholic parish, open to all. We preach the gospel of Christ, and I love being there. I've been there for, going on my fifth year, so prior to that, I've never, this is the first experience I have in Fullerton. I'm from Huntington Beach Westminster area, but as a priest, we get moved like every four years to different cities. So I have a good grasp of all of Orange County, because I think in a few months, don't tell anybody, because this is not supposed to be known, I'm moving to Huntington Beach, to St. Vincent de Paul. But anyways, it's good to be here with you all. Any questions? All right. And we have some, I think we're going to have some awards handed out today, so that's great. So congratulations. I don't know exactly what they are, but congratulations to you all for receiving your awards today, and thank you for having me here to, it's an honor to open up with the prayer. Thank you very much, Mayor, and council members and everybody else here. Thank you.
Father Otto, we're best happy.
I'll stick around for a bit, but then I got to go.
All right. I'll ask Councilmember Charles to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening.
Okay. As you are able, please rise. Hand over your heart, and follow with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any closed session reports this evening?
There's no report this evening.
Very well. I'll ask any council members if they have any ex parte communications. I'll look to my left. Seeing none, look to my right. Very well. We've got a handful of presentations, but we do have an honored guest in the audience today, and I'm going to ask him to come up. He's our District Four County Board of Supervisors, was the Chair of the Board of Supervisors last year, the Honorable Doug Chaffee. Sir.
For their marvelous participation in our gun buyback program. This occurred last year, and I'm just now getting around to give awards and commendations for what they did. Your police department merged seamlessly with six other departments to create a marvelous gun buyback program. We did some best practice research. We didn't want to give any cash, so instead we gave out Amazon cards and gasoline cards in return for their gun. We were able to collect over 400 guns during this one day, including 16 assault rifles. Assault rifle is a deadly machine, it has a large magazine, and that's typically what you see in some of these massacres that have been going on. So I'd like to commend the following officers from Fullerton that participated in that program. Sergeant Diaz, Detective Pedroza, Detective Braley, Detective Herrera, Officer Franco, Range Master Benedict, and CSO Haka. So if I may, I'd like to present a plaque here to your captain, who is here in place of Chief Dunn this evening.
Thank you for the great work you've done. Appreciate it.
We intend to do another gun buyback later on this year, and we again would like to have the participation of the police department. And what I noted when these seven departments came together, how seamlessly and how quickly they worked together, I think that speaks volumes about mutual aid that you may have, you may need, or you give out yourself. And so it's just remarkable, the training and the camaraderie that I saw among the North County police departments. Really great. And thank all of you for your support.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. All right. We do have outgoing board commission committee member recognition this evening, so I'm going to call out all of the individuals that will receive certificates this evening, some of whom are in the audience, some of whom are at home. I want to thank them all on behalf of our City Council and a grateful city for their remarkable dedication, their duty-bound capacity to recognize how important it is to give back to the community, and also to represent as their citizenry the residents and businesses of Fullerton. So Annie Sim.
Anne Sim.
I'm sorry, Anne Sim, thank you. David Robinson, Mark Shapiro, Adel Hashgalil, Ellen Ballard, Aisha Husseini, Brian Yanity, Lynn Lauderdale, Marina Lee, Enrique Macias, Rafael Avila, and Mr. Bins Buck. All of them have spent a remarkable year in dedicating themselves for the service of our city. I thank them all profoundly for their grace and their time. And Anne Sim and Ms. Ellen Ballard, if you would, I will present those certificates to you personally.
You each represent seven people. The other ones that aren't here. Here's Anne. Can we find Ellen for you? They were almost all. I'm going to start talking all handed to you. Is there your benefit?
Hi.
There you are on behalf of our city.
Thank you.
And you have one from the Assembly.
Sharon Corks Silva. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Ellen Ballard.
Hi.
Hi. This is from our city.
Thank you very much.
And also this one's from the Assembly.
Oh, very nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, as always.
You are very welcome. Take care.
One more. It's going to be a one on the bottom. I should start with the other one.
Murphy's Law.
Sorry?
It's always one. All right, sir. Father Robinson, here's one from our city and our City Council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your service, sir. And this is from Assemblymember Sharon Corks Silva.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Got it.
Then we have a certificate to give to Student Speakers of America. Where's Kayla Nguyen? Is she available? You want to come up, Kayla? All right. This is presented to Ms. Kayla Nguyen in recognition of commendable contributions to the Fullerton community. You are the co-founder and president of Student Speakers of America and Student Speakers of Troy. Is that right?
Yes.
That's great. What made you want to do this?
Well, I found it really hard to find, like, speaking opportunities, like speech and debate opportunities in my community, so I just wanted to provide accessible online opportunities to younger students.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Well, Ms. Kayla Nguyen, guess what? You get a speaking opportunity today.
I guess I would just like to thank the rest of my community who impelled me to do this. It was such a joy to be able to host workshops, to help middle school students and students
Sorry, we're running a bit behind, but we still appreciate you.
in my high school learn public speaking skills and be introduced to the speech and debate
And there are a lot of whereas's on here, but I'm going to close with this part.
community and the activity.
Whereas the city of Fullerton salutes the men and women of the Fullerton Police Department
So I would just like to thank everyone and my team as well behind me who have allowed
as well as our local law enforcement partners and those across the country who have chosen
me to be recognized today.
You've got the public speaking down.
a profession dedicated to service, sacrifice, and integrity.
Thank you.
There you go.
And therefore be it resolved that I, Fred Jung, Mayor Fred Jung, Mayor of the city of
And this is from the Assemblywoman, Sharon Corks Silva as well. All right. Let's put that like that, and then we can do a photo for the observer. Got it?
Thank you so much.
We've got to do one for staff.
Fullerton, on behalf of Fullerton City Council and the entire city staff, do hereby proclaim
All right. Great job.
Thank you.
You're back.
January 9, 2023, to be National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day.
We've got a proclamation for National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day.
The City Council of the city of Fullerton honors and supports all law enforcement officers for their service and dedication.
I want to invite the Mayor Protam down with me.
And please pass our best regards on to all of your members.
He can get some steps into this evening. We're going to present this to our captain here. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. And one last note. Many law enforcement officers are former military, and we also salute your service as well. Thanks. All right. We have one final presentation. It's certificates to Fullerton Bears. They won national championship in cheer, won the Super Bowl in football, so this is a treat, and I'll take my time on this one. We're going to invite the coaching staff to come up here. Everyone can come down. Come on down, folks. Don't be shy. Gentlemen, your football coaches, come on. And the team mom, of course. All right. When I call your name, come on up and get your certificates. We've got one from the City Council, who's all behind you, and one from the Assembly Member, Ms. Sharon Corks Silva. All right. Seth Ariano. Where is Seth? Where's Mr. Calvin Lin? Shane Bracamonte? Ryland Fields? Kyro Hazelwood? Dominic Martinez? Hey, Dominic. How are you? Good. Stephen Martinez? Melody Nelson-Dominic. William Trumbo? Alexander Placentia? How are you? Horst Schreier? And Julian Zamora. Certificate this way.
There we go. One more. Turn your certificate around. There you go. Thank you.
All right. Before we ask you a few words, we've got recognition from some coaches, so. All right. Coach Houshida. Coach Trumbo. Coach Zamora. And Coach Martinez. All right. All right. Who's going to come up and speak? Melody, you're going to come up and speak?
Can I speak right here? Hi, my name is Mello, and I'm one of the staff members for the Fullerton Bears. And first, I want to thank Mayor Fred and the City Council for recognizing the hard work these players put in this season. Most of all, we want to thank the parents for their time and dedication taking these kids to practices and games. The road to the Super Bowl is very hard and challenging, and what is special about these players is that majority of these players were first-year tackle players or have never played football. These players played their hearts out on both defense and offense, mostly, most often, against players that are twice their size. So winning the Super Bowl is not a guaranteed in any season, and these players did it. So we want to clap it up for, help me clap it up for these boys in winning the eight U Fullerton Bears Super Bowl champions for 2022. Good job, kids.
All right. It was a super good year for the Bears because their cheerleaders won the national championship too. Must be something in the water in 2022. So we're going to call them all up here. If you want to, don't be shy. Valerie? Ms. Jalen Medina? Jalen, you got some good. Emmeline Grimaldi? Anissa Royo Hernandez? Isabella Martinez? Malina Spina? Heaven Hazelwood? There you are. Greenlee Goodfill? Hi, Greenlee. Moana Word? Abriel Moreno? Tatiana Flores? And Aubrey Gwynn. Then before I let the coach speak.
Wives together just a little bit? Wives together? Wives together. Very perfect.
We got everybody? All right. And we've got to have coaches for these young ladies, so I've got to do Ms. Rosie Word. Where's Jocelyn? Jocelyn. And, oh, we can't see. That's my daughter. All right. So Rosie, do you want to say a few words?
One more photo, please. Smile, girls.
Hi, everybody. And go. One more. Okay, 20 more.
Good evening, and thank you for this recognition. This national championship was possible because of all the hard work from each of these girls and the commitment of their families and our staff. Being part of this competition team requires a 10-month-long commitment that many are understandably unwilling or unable to make, so thank you to each of you for making that commitment. I'd also like to thank our coaches for their creativity and dedication. Each of you are volunteers, and your sacrifices are, the sacrifices you're willing to make to help our program succeed is admirable. Years ago, before I started volunteering, Mayor Jung had asked me when I was going to start coaching. I told him I wasn't sure I had the time, and he smirked and said, "No one has the time, but they have the heart." So that comment has stuck with me well for the last few or several years and served me while I've been coaching all these girls. So coaches, please know that you are truly making a difference by showing our future leaders the most fulfilling thing they can do is serve their community. Lastly, I'd like to thank our community leaders, the Parks Department, and the city officials. Without your support, we would not be able to do what we do and have a space to have our local youth grow. So thank you.
We'll now begin public comments on regular sessions. Those of wish that have signed up to make public comment, Madam City Clerk, please invite them forward.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just remind the public, if you'd like to address City Council here in chambers, please make sure you register next door in the city manager's office, and we'll get you on the list to call you to the podium. If you have materials to distribute to City Council, please provide those materials also to the staff in the city manager's office. We'll call your name to the microphone when it's your turn to speak, and also remind you, this is also your opportunity to speak on consent calendar items, because we're not sure if council will pull your item or not. So we will start, I have 10? Nine? 10? Nine. People registered to speak here in chambers. Our first speaker is Dee Fox, and after that will be Bernard.
Ms. Fox, good evening.
Hi. I came here from the city of Irvine, and I'm here to speak on the OCPA. The very foundation of the OCPA is to provide its customers with cleaner power than SCE for the same rate or a little higher than SCE, depending on the percentage of power one wants to receive. But this is deceptive. I would even say corrupt, because the OCPA is not producing clean power. They are purchasing clean power supposedly. And that power is then fed into SCE's one grid that services all of Orange County. So whether you're part of the OCPA or not, everyone receives the same percentage of whatever that clean power is. Now, climate change activists say, "Well, that's okay. We support paying more for all to get the benefits." But is that what most people agree with? Choosing to pay more for the benefit of all? That's not how the OCPA is being marketed. It makes the consumer believe that they are actually getting that 50% or 100% clean energy into their homes, especially people that have no concept of how energy is transmitted. One could argue that that is taking advantage of the less fortunate, less educated, poor communities that don't have the access to look at what they are being told to pay more. So I would just like to thank everyone and my team as well behind me who have allowed me to be recognized today.
You've got the public speaking down.
Thank you.
There you go. And this is from the Assemblywoman, Sharon Corks Silva as well. All right. Let's put that like that, and then we can do a photo for the observer. Got it?
Thank you so much.
We've got to do one for staff. All right. Great job.
Thank you.
You're back. We've got a proclamation for National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. I want to invite the Mayor Protam down with me. He can get some steps into this evening. We're going to present this to our captain here.
This is to acknowledge National Law Enforcement Day, January 9, 2023. Sorry, we're running a bit behind, but we still appreciate you. And there are a lot of whereas's on here, but I'm going to close with this part. Whereas the city of Fullerton salutes the men and women of the Fullerton Police Department as well as our local law enforcement partners and those across the country who have chosen a profession dedicated to service, sacrifice, and integrity. And therefore be it resolved that I, Fred Jung, Mayor Fred Jung, Mayor of the city of Fullerton, on behalf of Fullerton City Council and the entire city staff, do hereby proclaim January 9, 2023, to be National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. The City Council of the city of Fullerton honors and supports all law enforcement officers for their service and dedication. And please pass our best regards on to all of your members.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. And one last note.
Many law enforcement officers are former military, and we also salute your service as well. Thanks.
All right. We have one final presentation. It's certificates to Fullerton Bears. They won national championship in cheer, won the Super Bowl in football, so this is a treat, and I'll take my time on this one. We'll do the eight U Super Bowl champions first. We're going to invite the coaching staff to come up here. Everyone can come down. Come on down, folks. Don't be shy. Gentlemen, your football coaches, come on. And the team mom, of course. All right. When I call your name, come on up and get your certificates. We've got one from the City Council, who's all behind you, and one from the Assembly Member, Ms. Sharon Corks Silva. All right. Seth Ariano. Where is Seth? Where's Mr. Calvin Lin? Shane Bracamonte? Ryland Fields? Kyro Hazelwood? Dominic Martinez? Hey, Dominic. How are you? Good. Stephen Martinez? Melody Nelson-Dominic? William Trumbo? Alexander Placentia? How are you? Horst Schreier? And Julian Zamora. Certificate this way.
That's better. There we go. One more. Okay, 20 more.
Good evening, and thank you for this recognition. This national championship was possible because of all the hard work from each of these girls and the commitment of their families and our staff. Being part of this competition team requires a 10-month-long commitment that many are understandably unwilling or unable to make, so thank you to each of you for making that commitment. I'd also like to thank our coaches for their creativity and dedication. Each of you are volunteers, and your sacrifices are, the sacrifices you're willing to make to help our program succeed is admirable. Years ago, before I started volunteering, Mayor Jung had asked me when I was going to start coaching. I told him I wasn't sure I had the time, and he smirked and said, "No one has the time, but they have the heart." So that comment has stuck with me well for the last few or several years and served me while I've been coaching all these girls. So coaches, please know that you are truly making a difference by showing our future leaders the most fulfilling thing they can do is serve their community. Lastly, I'd like to thank our community leaders, the Parks Department, and the city officials. Without your support, we would not be able to do what we do and have a space to have our local youth grow. So thank you.
Congratulations, all of you. We'll now begin public comments on regular sessions. Those of wish that have signed up to make public comment, Madam City Clerk, please invite them forward.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just remind the public, if you'd like to address City Council here in chambers, please make sure you register next door in the city manager's office, and we'll get you on the list to call you to the podium. If you have materials to distribute to City Council, please provide those materials also to the staff in the City Manager's Office. We'll call your name to the microphone when it's your turn to speak, and also remind you, this is also your opportunity to spoke, speak on consent calendar items because we're not sure if council will pull your item or not. So, we will start, I have ten, nine, ten, nine, people registered to speak here in chambers. Our first speaker is Dee Fox, and after that will be Bernard.
Ms. Fox, good evening.
Hi. I came here from the city of Irvine, and I'm here to speak on the OCPA. The very foundation of the OCPA is to provide its customers with cleaner power than SCE for the same rate or a little higher than SCE, depending on the percentage of power one wants to receive. But this is deceptive, I would even say corrupt, because the OCPA is not producing clean power. They are purchasing clean power, supposedly. And that power is then fed into SCE's one grid that services all of Orange County. So, whether you're part of the OCPA or not, everyone receives the same percentage of whatever that clean power is. Now, climate change activists say, "Well, that's okay. We support paying more for all to get the benefits." But is that what most people agree with? Choosing to pay more for the benefit of all? That's not how the OCPA is being marketed. It makes the consumer believe that they are actually getting that 50% or 100% clean energy into their homes, especially people that have no concept of how energy is transmitted. One could argue that that is taking advantage of the less fortunate, less educated, poor communities that don't have the access to look at what they are being told to pay more for, putting their trust in their city leaders. But all this is to then assume that the OCPA is actually purchasing clean energy. However, you're being told that your interest in knowing is not important enough as it is for this organization to shield it from you in the interest of getting better prices for power. Well, I wasn't born yesterday, and I don't pay more for something because I was told to without proof of the product being purchased and used on my behalf. Isn't that just common sense? And the fact that Ryan Baron lied about the concealment being mandated by the state gives me pause to question anything else he may say. And the only conceivable reason for him to further his lie is to prevent the public from seeing the OCPA purchasing cheap fossil fuel, selling off the renewable energy, and then turning them into renewable energy certificates, or RECs, and presenting those certificates to the state as their contribution to the environment, not for the benefit of our cities, but somewhere, somewhere, we'll get some of the benefits that aren't lost in transmission. And that is the reality. It's fudging of numbers, power, and money to be able to contribute, continue this scam and keep politicians in power by portraying themselves as leaders in the fight against climate change, at least to those who don't question them. I gave you, I gave you all packets, and in your packets you'll see, I have a copy of the JPA agreement. And in that agreement, you'll see on page 10, 5.5, that your ratepayers are actually responsible for paying back the city of Irvine.
Thank you. Have a good day. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Bernard, and following Bernard will be Gil Nelson.
Hello, my name is Bernard, and I am a Fullerton resident. Mr. Jung, I am here explicitly asking again, what was my input that you took into consideration? I'm waiting for your response. Or are you yet again going to prove that you only pretend to listen while making absurd jokes? Maureen Milton, remember when he assured you with his word that he would affix his front license plate and then made a stupid joke? Well, it's now February, and he has still yet to affix his license plate. And it's not just city policy, it's actually state law. But he doesn't think that it applies to him because he is a narcissist. May I remind you, word is bond. I forget that in an attempt to further silence the public, you took away the public's ability to pull consent calendar items. The declaration was to establish Songnam as a friendship city. Mr. Jung, did you include an asterisk next to your signature to indicate that you went against city policy? Twice to steal the title of mayor? You can try to backtrack when you are caught lying on these cameras. You can try to blame others and not take accountability when you are caught lying to your constituents. But friends are forthcoming and do not lie. I repeat, lying is a weakness and shameful behavior for a so-called adult. Same bad majority, same bad corruption.
Good night, Ms. Roll.
Next speaker is Gil Nelson, and after that will be Harvey List.
My name is not Oh.
Hey. What is the matter with you?
That's not my name. That's not my name.
Oh. Well, you'll have to forgive me, then.
When have I ever identified myself as Mr. Jung? Never.
I said Oh, O-H, not Joe. It'd be, maybe it's a mask.
I never have. You're outrageous.
Next speaker, Madam City Clerk.
Next speaker, Gil Nelson.
Mr. Nelson, good evening, sir.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Gil Nelson, and I'm a resident of Irvine. And tonight, I'm here as a group of three of us that'll be speaking. You've just heard from Dee Fox regarding her comments on OCPA. And I realize that your city has also dealt with OCPA and the issues surrounding it. I'm here, and I, I'm here to speak on the fact that I'd like to encourage you, councilmembers, to reconsider your position in the OCPA as to the rate. I realize you've debated this, actually, it was a year ago, I believe, this month that you folks talked about, would you be 100%, would you be 68%, or would you be 38%? I would, I would encourage you to go to the 38.5% because, as your city staff pointed out at that particular time, when they said, according to a staff report, the 69.2% renewable choice would increase the city's annual energy cost by, and it was estimated at that time, I would say that that money, honestly, if you would go down to the 38%, you ought to be using that money for the benefit of your residents in this city by having solar installation subsidies, utility subsidies for low-income residents, and subsidies for your low-income needy. That money ought not to be paid to OCPA for something that, honestly, you could get at a cheaper price from Edison. But because you're participating in the OCPA, and, Mr. Jung, I realize you're the new board president. But money is money. And here in the city of Fullerton, you all have the fiduciary responsibility to keep the money for your residents. And if you could save $237 million, or $1,000, sounds like millions at times, I will, how my mind went to that is I will share with you, next Tuesday night, Councilman Larry Agren is talking to his city council about going to the basic rate because they, Irvine has learned that they have spent $1.2 million in excess of what they would have spent with the basic rate. So, they are considering, and they may have the votes to take it down to the lower rate. The other factor that you have to consider is to, as long as you're in the OCPA, and you had a chance to get out, actually, the 31st of this past month, you folks will be liable. Your ratepayers will be liable in the event that there is a deficit if OCPA does go bankrupt. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck in the decision. I realize it's been a very tough decision, and that's why we like smart people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Harvey List, and after that will be Wuderek.
Mr. List, good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Harvey List, a resident of Irvine since 1976. I'm here to persuade Fullerton residents to opt out of the Orange County Power Authority and sign up with Southern California Edison. Firstly, I'm curious why anyone would want to stay with OCPA when Southern Cal Edison offers a significant discount for 100% renewable sources of energy. That's a discount, not a premium. And SCE states on their website that the cost of renewables energy is now cheaper than fossil fuel energy. So, why pay more for renewables? SCE's website for residential rates says "Energy costs are estimated to be 1.1 cents lower for each kilowatt hour of usage that is served on the green rate." That's what Southern Cal Edison calls their renewables program, green rate. In my case, since I'm enrolled in SCE's 100% green rate program, that represents a 3% reduction on the energy cost from the basic rate. OCPA claims they are offering a 2% discount on the energy rate compared to SCE's basic rate, and the cost goes up from there, 450 and 100% renewables. So, you automatically get a discount by leaving OCPA, going to SCE, and enrolling in the 100% renewables. You'll get a significant discount. However, I should also mention that a lot of people believe, because they're told, and they've told me, that SCE no longer is offering 100% renewable energy sources. That's a lie being pushed by a small group of people who apparently have no interest in facts and refuse to check out SCE's website under the green rate program. SCE's website does say, "As capacity becomes available, SCE will enroll customers onto the green rate on a first-come, first-served basis." But SCE's method of applying to be enrolled has evolved and is now the simplest. You just fill out a simple form. One person I know who did that just two weeks ago was enrolled immediately. When I applied to enroll in June of 2022, it took two weeks until I received confirmation that I was enrolled. I haven't heard of anyone being denied enrollment in SCE's 100% renewables. And on another matter, I'm looking at the 2022 California Renewables Portfolio Standard Annual Report to the Legislature dated November 2022. Anyway, it shows the Orange County Power Authority for a compliance period, '21 to '24, at 0% purchases of renewables. I don't believe that the OCPA is telling the truth, and they're keeping their contracts for energy purposes a secret. And there's probably a reason why they're keeping that secret. Makes a lot more sense for people to take their money, at least the residents, to SCE. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Wuderek, good evening, sir.
And following Mr. Wuderek will be Todd Harrison.
Thank you very much, members of the council. I wanted to comment on the issue here last, the last council meeting, but I missed it because of the time of the public comment. I wanted to just comment on something which I experienced, too, in this council with regard to the appointment of the commissions and boards. What I want to say, I think about five, six years ago, I applied for that board. But I appeared for the interview, but I can't say that I was qualified. But my concern is that the city council need to revalorize and revamp the way they appoint people. One of the council members said that, oh, they, if there is an issue of racism, we'll collect a data. In law, there is a Latin term which we use, it's called res ipsa luctu. The thing speaks for itself. Racism is alive and is working everywhere. So, what I emphasize is that in the next appointment, me, I will not apply for anything like council or board again. Please endeavor to employ the diversity and good face of Latin. I appreciate this council that today is my first time I saw black kids here also receiving certificates. So, I look forward, the day the police will call them again for, to receive candy, they will also call those black kids, and I was so much happy. That's what we call the diversity of a community. So, I'm very, very much happy, and if we continue on that path, if we celebrate the February, the Day of Black Achievement, at least city council of Fullerton can find something they lay their hand on. Like the White House, I see the press lady there is a black woman. I, the Supreme Court Justice, Justice, the other lady is a black woman. There are wonderful things, black men, people are also full human beings. They have full potential. They are not like property as described in some certain century, but then Justice Roger Taney, that's some mere property which can be bought and sold like anything else. So, I appreciate the city council, you are on the right path. Please address the core issue of racism in the entire city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Harrison, good evening, sir.
And after Todd Harrison will be Yolanda Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Todd Harrison, and I'm one of the endangered residents of the Rancho La Paz Mobile Home Park. Hello again, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and city staff of all departments. Last night, I spoke to our HOA about the Fullerton Fire Department Paramedic Subscription Program. From the questions and comments I heard, I have some, from the question and comments I heard, I have some time to speak here on this topic. This is not about a complaint about Fullerton having this program or even the cost. It's a very sensible program, and for a senior community such as Rancho La Paz, a very good thing considering how often Fullerton fire trucks show up for someone not doing well. That said, there are some opportunities to do better. As far as I can tell, the fire department sends out one letter in advance of the renewal date each year. Polling the other homeowners brought up a lot of hands that did not know the program exists. There are also many that did not or did not remember getting that letter this last year. I'm aware of no additional efforts to promote these subscriptions or any attempt to follow up on non-renewals. I'm a subscriber, or thought I was until I called today to check and was told I'm not. Nine-plus months later, I don't know if I missed the notice or did not get one. After all, I'm not the only Fullerton senior with memory issues. So, besides those I asked last night, I believe there are many that should and do not have a current subscription. I found out yesterday that the Anaheim includes their $43 a year program as a monthly fee on residents' water bills. There's been plenty of complaints about the size of Fullerton's water bills, but perhaps an optional reminder of the subscription could be included in the future? Hard-pressed for money and staff as Fullerton Fire is, I don't want to fault them for how easy it is not to have a subscription, but I'm still here to say, please do better. As difficult as it likely is to get the payment for every medical aid call served, I think it will benefit Fullerton Fire or the city administration to encourage these payments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Harrison, good evening.
And after Ms. Harrison will be Mike Vargas.
Bonjour, councilmembers, Mayor, Mayor Potem. I'm Yolanda Harrison, a permanent snowbird. That means I'm Canadian, so I don't stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance because that's just not, no. God save the king, God save us from that king. A permanent snowbird and a current resident of Rancho La Paz. I'm curious about the state of affairs for the Costco Way Harbor crossings. Are you still planning on shutting down the southern crossing of Harbor? Did you know, Monsieur's and Madame, that there is no other controlled crossing on Harbor between Costco Way and Valencia? If you still plan to remove that crossing, are you going to add a controlled crossing between Costco Way and Valencia? There isn't one. Did you also know that there's no ground-level crossing of Lemon between Orange Thorpe and Valencia? Yes, there is an elevated crossing, but people that have to use mobility devices or scooters or push a stroller can't use it. I won't even truly begin to describe the deadly conditions of Valencia and Lemon. I was nearly taken out again by an inintuitive driver turning left onto Lemon on Sunday. I would like to pass on a tiny bit of information to the police. Stick a plainclothes officer at the northeast parking lot at the corner of Harbor and Orange Thorpe. Yes, this is the Costco, Amazon Prime parking lot, by the cell phone site and the restaurants there, Jersey Mike's and all that. The amount of people abusing the handicap parking for just a minute, "I'm just picking up a delivery," would fill the monthly quota of tickets in a day or two. And lastly, I'd like to thank the fire department and emergency services for once again saving my husband's life, even though we've now found out that we're not part of the subscription. You guys were there when we needed you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Vargas.
Mike Vargas is our next speaker.
Mr. Vargas.
And then our last three are Jane Rans, Curtis Gamble, and Kurt Johnson after that.
All right, thank you. Good evening, sir.
Mike Vargas, I just, you guys missed a point. I don't want to come here every council meeting, but the whole point was filed against the police a complaint, I don't know, two, three years ago. And what I wanted to say, finally found a smoking gun when there was a guy named Uncle Tom named Flores, a policeman. Like, once again, I like the policeman. The thing is, you guys missed the whole point. For filing a complaint, I got thrown out of my place, and right here. I lived in Irvine for... I lived in Irvine for 14 years. I lived in Irvine for, I lived in Irvine for 14 years, and I got thrown out of my place because the officer said that I lived in the place there in Walnut. That's a few years back, but when I'm saying my civil rights were taken away from me for being honest and filing a complaint, the policeman had put guns against me. And then after that, two days later, I get my car, and I have to pay for my car to get out. No sorry from the policeman, they didn't say they're sorry. What I'm saying is, it cost me thousands of dollars to get rid of my cars to find another place, but you guys missed the whole point. Four policemen, 99 and a half, they're all good. All of them are good, but for, I lost my civil right for flying some policemen that put their guns on me three years back, and I finally found a police report where it said that I was living there. I was never living there, and I can prove it if they want, but my civil rights were violated, and we're in 2023, Mike Vargas. And I just wanted you guys to know what the whole story was about. I left you guys the papers and never got one, when nobody even called me. Okay, no problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Jane Rans, good evening.
And following Ms. Rans will be Curtis Gamble.
Good evening, Mayor, and Council. I have concerns. I came to you about maybe four, six months ago with concerns about our Active Transportation Committee meetings being canceled and not having items agendized that clearly are in the purview of the Active Transportation Committee. So we're back to square one, and so I'm bringing it to your attention again, please. So one of the issues that I didn't bring up then that continues to be an issue, and we brought it up to our staff on the days that we have been able to meet, or about the meeting days. Because we're somehow relegated to Wednesdays only, we've asked to meet on different days, but we're told we're only allowed to meet on Wednesdays. We ended up with a conflict with the Planning Commission. Planning Commission is the only commissioner committee that doesn't, well, that meets every other Wednesday rather than first and third or second and fourth, like all the other committees and commissions do. So to avoid conflict, we were told, well, the resolution is, we'll make you guys every fourth Wednesday. How does someone plan that into their schedule, right? Most people have, my women's club meeting always the second Monday of the month, not every fourth Monday of the month, every fourth Monday, and that's how most meetings are scheduled. So when people have lives, and I have to say, people on the committee have lives, it's really hard for them to plan, and I think that's one of the issues with, why some of the appointees have been unable to fulfill their obligation. I know that you've guys have worked to fill the vacant spots or hopefully fill the spots for the people who just notoriously don't show up. So we would like, we need to be allowed to meet on a different day than Wednesday and to have a regular meeting day. I know it's considered regular if it's every four, but regular like everybody else, like council. Another big issue is staffing. It's not clear who our staff is. In the past, we were, under Matt Folkes' direction, it was very effective because Matt Folkes took a great interest in the kind of improvements that our city can make and really made a mark for himself and made a mark for the city and has a lot of successful projects that he was able to implement. We need a staff that has that same perspective. Another issue is our minutes have not been typed up from, I think, as far back as May. We're waiting on those, so we can't even approve them. They're not posted online. We also need a policy to be able to coordinate amongst other committees and commissions. We also need to have a policy that allows the committee to agendize items because the staff isn't aware of items that should be agendized. And then also, I have a concern about canceled meetings. Our meeting for tomorrow was canceled for a reasonable reason. I just want to ensure, we were told by staff that we would have a meeting on the 22nd, not posted on the calendar at a minimum. Could you please get our meeting on the 22nd scheduled with an agenda that allows us to select at a minimum a chair and a vice chair? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Gamble, good evening, sir. And who's next after that, Madam City Clerk?
Last speaker after that is Kurt Johnston.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Curtis Gamble, activist for the homeless and the veterans and the low-income community also. I'd like to say rest in peace to Tyre Nichols, as the young man that was murdered by the Memphis Police Officers, January the 10th, 2023. Also, I'd like to say happy Black History Month. Also, I'd like to share with you, February the 1st, 2023, Pat, Orange County opened a cold weather emergency shelter at Independence Park Gym in Fullerton. We need free OCTA bus passes for Cal State Fullerton's 40,000 students and the Fullerton homeless. Fullerton churches are allowed to have emergency shelters for up to 12 homeless people. This evening, this evening, once again, I would like to share with you my thoughts on the Fullerton homeless and the veterans and low-income community. The Cash App card is a free Visa debit card which allows the community to pay for rent, electricity, and other goods and services. Also, all the local business in Fullerton should be accepting the EBT card. The City of Fullerton Municipal Code for Emergency Shelters, first come, first served basis, should be followed by the City Council, the Planning Commission, and the Fullerton Police Department. The housing element of 2021, 2029 should also include a safe RV parking program, a rental parking space program, and taming homes. The OC 2022 point-in-time count should, states that the City of Fullerton has over 200 homeless people on the streets. They should be in apartments, shelters, taming homes, and safe parking programs. In 2016, the Legal Aid Society of Orange County sold a $1 million lawsuit for emergency shelters in the Bay Ridge industrial zones. James Mayfield, rest in peace, received 20,000, and myself received 20,000. February the 1st, 2023, Pat up Orange County opened a cold weather shelter, again, at Independence Park. The cost is about $596,000 for two months. The county is also paying the city a monthly rent of $7,500 for the use of the facility. Fullerton was sued for not having RV parking. Also, we should allow OCTA and the OCTA bus drivers to pick up and drop off at the Fullerton homeless shelters. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, one moment. Mr. Gamble, I do have some good news for you. The Orange County Transportation Authority has a free college fair, so all college students ride the bus for free. Also, they have youth free pass, youth ride for free as well. You bet. All right, Mr. Johnson, good evening, sir.
Hello, my name is Kurt Johnston. I want to talk about some safety improvements and safety concerns. The first thing I'd like to say is the improvements that are really nice are the better lighting at the transportation center. There's a lot of improved lighting in the lower parking lot and other parking lots which make it a safer place. Some of them illuminate, when you go under them, they illuminate brighter. I like the, on the streets, I like the orange, I don't know what you call those lights, but they seem to be brighter. And the reason I bring that up is because I have a concern about the energy-saving LED I've had a chance to notice a lot of accidents out there on the street, and I feel like the lighting, especially on the crosswalks, is not, it's not lit up enough. When you're driving down the street, you can't see the crosswalk. These energy-saving lights don't illuminate the paint. Namely, one of the intersections is Valencia, I mean, by Costco in front of B&amp;B Donuts. We had a triple hit-and-run, three cars hit the same person in the crosswalk. If you take, if you go one block north on Orange Thorpe, one of those lights is burned out, and it's been out for a long time, and you could barely cross there because it looks so dark. We had an accident on Newell Street. When the paramedics and the police were there, the flashlight was much brighter than the, in fact, it was so dark, it wasn't hard to figure out why someone would get T-boned there, but part of the problem is, is people are just driving too fast. But when the lighting isn't bright enough, you can't safely drive the speed limit when you can't see the road. But there are a lot of nice places along Orange Thorpe, up on Harbor, north of St. Jude Hospital, where they have those bright orange lights. You barely clearly see the road. If anyone's crossing, you'd be able to see them. So that's one of my concerns is just to kind of check out the street lighting, and some of the other improvements are, it's nice to see the motor cops out there patrolling, speeding cars that come down Harbor. And there's one other good point I forgot, but that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Madam City Clerk, anything over on Zoom?
We have one hand raised in Zoom at the moment, and it is call-in user one, and she should be allowed to speak.
Good evening, Mayor. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can hear you, Maureen.
Thank you, dear. I have some good news that I hope nobody will have to use. I heard last night that the situation with cars at Costco has been solved, but just in case, this was done before the situation had been solved last night. I did this about a week or two ago. If anyone, if this, the situation with the gas line happens again, employees have the permission, the cart pullers, to escort people from Costco to the bus stop at Orange Thorpe without a problem. This was cleared by Laura in Administration and Manager Carlos. It was done on the 18th of January about 5:30 PM. So if anybody, if this situation does happen again, you can get assistance from Costco. They have been very kind to allow their cart pullers to escort people off Costco property and down to the bus stop at Orange Thorpe. But I hope we can all use the bus stop at Costco Way because that's the only stop between Orange Thorpe and Commonwealth. Thank you so much, and have a good rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll bring this back to council. Before we go to council reports, I did want to ask, do we have an update, Mr. City Manager, on the crosswalk situation that Ms. Harrison was referencing?
You're talking about the crosswalk at Costco?
Costco.
Costco, yes. So I do have an update right now, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. The Harbor-Southgate Costco improvements have been completed. The Speaker just now was correct. Only South Cross, the South Crosswalk was removed, which was approved to the City Council. There still is a controlled crossing on the north side of the same intersection, and those improvements have been completed as of this week.
Very well, thank you for that update. And then one other concern that one of our commenters had was the Active Transportation Committee and their lack of meetings. Do we not have a staff member that can take this, some personal accountability here and make sure these meetings are timely and not canceled? Moreover, do we have an opportunity to have some flex dates, make sure that we're off Wednesdays? Maybe they can meet on a Thursday?
So, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, I can check on the flex dates. I'm not positive on that. I haven't looked into that. I did talk to the Community Development Director, and the 22nd, I believe the Speaker mentioned, is scheduled, and there are multiple items on the 22nd of February. The one that was scheduled for tomorrow was canceled. It was because of improvements in this room, and so the room was not available. That was the issue for tomorrow.
Understood. All right. Thank you, sir. Anything else to report this evening?
I can report on the parking. I sent an update out to the council on the parking regarding the residential parking permits. We are going to a hybrid. It's going to take about a month or so, but we are going to a hybrid system on that for the next two years, where we're going to allow people to use either the tags or do the electronic system so that people that have done the system to date won't have to go back and redo anything, but to allow others that have had problems to be able to do it. We are working on that and trying to work through that solution right now.
All right, very well, sir. All right, we'll bring this back to council. Councilmember Charles, do you have anything to report this evening?
Yes, thank you. And good evening, and I'd like to reiterate what some of our speakers said about happy Black History Month. It is an important month in February. I'd like to paraphrase my father-in-law, my late father-in-law, a jazz musician named Eddie Marshall. If any of you are jazz fans, you could look him up, who, when asked himself about what he thought about Black History Month, he said, and again, paraphrasing, not direct quote, but that he appreciated it but did not, was offended that it did not go beyond a month, and that the idea that we should just think about for one month is what is offensive, and we should be putting this kind of ethos and thinking about Black history as American history throughout the entire year. And so in that spirit, I would also like to wish everybody a happy month of beginning this new year. So to report, Fullerton District 3 and Cal State Fullerton was happy to host a meeting with Congressman Correa and the Small Business Administration Head, who is a cabinet-level official in the Biden-Harris administration, who came here to Fullerton, and they were hosted at our very own School of Business on campus, talking about small businesses. And we had representatives from all the local chambers of commerce. It was a very productive meeting, and I just want to encourage anybody who's listening, if you are a small business yourself, if you're establishing a small business in Fullerton, to please also avail yourselves not only of our city resources, but the SBA Administrator made it very clear that there are federal resources that include loans and payroll help and all sorts of help in terms of navigating the process for small businesses that are launching that you can find on the SBA's website, the federal website. So I just want to encourage folks to take advantage of that. And I also want to thank the constituents that have reached out to me in the last two or three weeks, as people get used to having a new council member address to reach out to and a new phone number. I'm also doing my office hours, as I've been saying. I've had some folks come in for those office hours. It's been really great to meet people in person and talk to them one-on-one. Those are Thursdays, noon to 2:00. Please feel free to come to council, whether you live in my district or not. I'm happy to talk to you. And I just want to assure people that, you know, if you don't hear back from me, please make sure that you send it one more time because I will absolutely always respond back. So if for some reason the universe and the ether of the internet decided to drop your email and I didn't get it, that's the only reason why I wouldn't respond, because I definitely want to hear from you, and please reach out. And I am looking into those things like water rates, which, just to respond to one constituent question, the water rates will be looked at again next year, and I'll send a more detailed response to that person by email. But if you want to be part of reevaluating what we do on our water rates and how we're going to be setting those for next year and encouraging more on conservation, that's going to be something we're all going to have to address in 2024. So I hope the public will be involved in that conversation, and thank you. I look forward to the next two weeks of working for the council.
Very well, thank you. Councilmember Dunlap?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I've got a report, but would also like to just comment on some of the public comments we received this evening with respect to the Orange County Power Authority. Certainly, as you know, these are, you know, some of the concerns that were outlined are concerns that I share, and I think for those in attendance, you know, two of us on this dais were opposed to, you know, the original transition to the OCPA. And so I say that because I think it's clear at this point that there are a number of issues, a number of concerns, and I think at best they are concerns, at worst, well, they're much worse than that. And so I really think it's this point, at this point, it's best for us to kind of reevaluate this relationship and see if there isn't room for a potential change. I know one thing that's concerning was the way that the rollout to the business community was handled. A number of business owners that I've talked to with respect to the change had indicated that they did not receive notices. I talked to others who said they received one notice only. And so I think really what's unfortunate is that as these business owners are now looking to change back to, potentially change back to SoCal Edison, you know, they're faced with increased rates to the tune of thousands of dollars. And so clearly, it's unfortunate. I think there were a lot of unintended consequences, but my hope would be that we could get this agendized for a future discussion to, you know, kind of evaluate that relationship. So with that, I want to shift gears because there's a few things I want to touch on quickly. I wanted to give a quick plug for Love Fullerton Day that's coming up, April 22nd, 2023. It's a great day, as hundreds, if not thousands, of Fullertonians will attest to, and it's, I hope- I hope you will, you know, join us out there, trying to make a difference in a number of community projects. You could go to, you know, ocunited.org for additional information. As I understand it, they'll have, you know, kind of a whole roster of events that are taking place and that you'll be able to participate in, I think as of March 15th. So lastly, I wanted to, you know, recognize that this year marks the 40th anniversary of the release of one of the most iconic punk rock albums of all time. And I note this because it's a Fullerton band and really, you know, somebody, people that I grew up listening to, but, you know, yes, 1983 marked the release of Social Distortions, Mommy's Little Monster. And, you know, I, of course, found out about this album much later in the mid-'90s, because I was a newborn when it was released. But, you know, obviously, a Fullerton band, actually, this album was recorded at the Casbah Studios, which no longer exists, but was on, is on West Commonwealth. And I can remember being at Troy High School and looking back in the yearbooks of the late '70s to find, you know, of course, Mike Ness, Dennis Denell, Brent Lyles, and Casey Royer. And so I've had the opportunity to see them a number of times over the years, but, you know, a great album, and certainly, if you haven't listened to it lately, you definitely should. That's my report.
Very well, sir. Councilmember Zara?
Thank you. I too want to wish everyone a happy Black History Month, and what I'd like to ask is that if we can, next year, participate in the parade that Anaheim does every year, I think this would be a great, a great addition for the things that we're doing. And I did, I happen to go and attend the festival that happens there. I missed the parade because we didn't have a car there, but it would be really nice to be able to participate in that. A lot of other cities do, so I hope we can look into that. And then maybe at the next council meeting, have a proclamation for Black History Month, since we would still be in that month. I do want to also thank Cal State Fulton and Congressman Lou Correa for hosting the SBA Administrator. I too, I attended that, and I think it's really important that we start looking at our business community in, not only to benefit our small businesses, but I think it pays dividends to our city, to our residents, in increased revenue, and then reinvesting that in services to our, to our residents. So it really is important that we really focus on economic development and start supporting our business community. I want to give a big thanks to our chief for spearheading and really taking initiative on the winter shelter. Chief Dunn did a really great job in facilitating this, and then it was approved and now in operation in the Independence Park Gymnasium, it's an empty building, and it will operate for a couple of months. And I wish we had it sooner, because it seems like the weather is warming up a little bit, but nevertheless, I think it is a good gesture from our city, and we have been leading the way on many issues concerning homelessness, and I hope we can continue to do that. What I'd like to ask is if our city's manager and with our chief could start from now talking to our supervisors about a permanent location, possibly, and maybe surrounding cities for next year, so that we don't have extended periods of time of trying to figure out where to put it. I know that a gymnasium in a park may not be the most suitable places, so maybe we can start looking at that from now. It probably would take a year to do that, if not longer. So, and I do want to thank the Board of Supervisors. I did go the day they approved it, and I did confirm our council's support, and that hopefully we can work with them on trying to find some permanent location for it. On the power authority, we have not had a update, in fact, in many months, on what was going on. We are relegated to hearing about it from the press and hearing about it from individuals who come to our council. So I concur with Councilman Dunlap and would happily second his request to place something on the agenda. I'm hoping maybe if we can put an update for next, the next council meeting or whenever it's convenient, so that we can have, we can start looking at options for us and where we are, and maybe looking at the various options for cost as well. So it'd be great to see that happen. And finally, I'd like to, just on a, on a personal note, I know there's, you've probably watched on the news, the earthquake that happened in Syria and Turkey. It was, the epicenter was in South Turkey, and it hit the northern parts of Syria. And I want to, I appreciate everybody who reached out to me. My family are okay. They are in Damascus, although they did feel it. It was, reached Damascus at a 4.9. So that's how severe it was. It was felt all the way in Egypt and in South Jordan. So this is a very significant catastrophe that happened there. Thousands and thousands of people have died, thousands of buildings have collapsed, and we're still looking at, watching videos of also heroism, and I just was, just sent a, also a report that a baby was born under rubble. So, I mean, these are all really significant things, but it really is, it puts life in perspective, and that we are renters of this earth, and you never know when it can get angry at us. So we have to be kind and mindful of each other. And on that, I know we live in California, and California is earthquake land as well, and so maybe we can put out something for our residents as well. Maybe our police department, fire department could put out some reminders of what to do in case of an emergency as well. So that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Much has been covered by fellow council members at this point, and I don't really have reports this evening, but I would like to comment and remark back to the very positive opening of this meeting. National champs, that Bears cheer team. What was also remarkable to me was their spirited recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe they should be invited to join us at any time to lead the pledge. But how could the Bears themselves not win the Super Bowl with such a spirited cheer team? And so we clearly were visited by the good news Bears here this evening. That's all. Thank you.
Well said, sir. We've got no appointments this evening, so we'll go to consent calendar. Consent calendar. I'll seek a motion from council.
I'll move the consent calendar.
There, second.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call a rule.
Councilmember Charles?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunlap?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Whitaker?
Aye.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
All right, we have no public hearings. The regular business item is our agreement between the City of Fullerton and Fullerton Firefighters Association. I'm going to ask Director Manfred to come up and do the presentation this evening. Good evening, your honor.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am happy to present the tentative agreement between the City and the Fullerton Firefighters Association. Next slide, please. This process began shortly after the council's October 2022 decision to retain the Fullerton Fire Department and not contract with OCFA. We've been negotiating for several months now, and this tentative agreement is the product of those efforts. Some proposed changes in support of rebuilding the Fullerton Fire Department include this new memorandum of agreement, and also your consent, item number six, a whole host of revised classification specifications for both sworn and non-sworn positions, which will aid in promotion and recruiting of vital positions in the department. Next slide. By way of quick background, the Fullerton Firefighters Association represents approximately 87 budgeted positions, approximately 69 of which are filled, and hopefully, with approval of this MOA, we can make quick progress in filling the rest. It includes both sworn classifications, suppression classifications, as well as non-sworn fire prevention classifications. The current agreement actually expires June 30th, but with these negotiations, we've reopened the contract, and this new agreement would supersede that agreement in full. These were fairly comprehensive negotiations, and you will see that there are quite a number of changes as a result. First off, I am pleased to report that we've achieved over a four-year deal with this agreement, which will aid greatly in stability of the department. Getting into the terms of the agreement, starting in January of this year, an eight across, 8% salary increase for all personnel, very significant move by the city council. In July, another 4% salary increase. The following July, another 4% salary increase. The following July, a 3% salary increase, and the following July, another 3% salary increase. These are significant moves by the city council, and will aid greatly in establishing competitive compensation for the Fullerton Fire Department. In addition, we did add a step seven for fire captain and fire engineer, beginning in July of 2024. Next slide. We also added a step eight for fire captain, effective in July of 2025. This will aid in compaction and facilitate promotional opportunities within the department. We've also improved the paramedic level two bonus from 13.5% of top step firefighter to a 15% of base pay calculation. We've also incentivized, further incentivized stability by adding longevity step after start of the sixth year, beginning at 3%, and then increasing next year to 6%. We've also made some modifications to how we handle our contributions to CalPERS. We are eliminating in the final year of the contract, the employer-paid member contribution, and in kind, we are reducing the employees' cost sharing in the same amount. And lastly, on this slide, we do have a modification to the constant staffing provision that, should we have vacancies that reach 10% of budgeted suppression positions, we can reduce staffing on two apparatus from four to three and not require mandatory overtime in that Lastly, the fiscal impact for the remainder of this fiscal year, about half a million dollars. For next fiscal year, $1.8 million. For the following fiscal year, $2.8 million. For the following fiscal year, $3.3 million. And for the final year of the agreement, $3.8 million for a total cumulative cost of four-and-a-half-year contract of $12.4 million. With that, I entertain any comments, questions, and it is recommended that you adopt the resolution to implement this tentative agreement.
All right. Director Manfred, thank you very much. I want to ask the chief, Chief Lozier, can you, we had a concern from a member of the public that came a few meetings back, talking about District One not having a paramedic. How long ago was that established that way?
That unit was, the paramedic unit was in 2018. So it's been five years now.
Long before three of the members of council were even on council, right?
I believe so, yes.
And was that for budgetary reasons?
Yes.
And what was the budgetary constraint? Why in District One of all districts?
Well, it wasn't specific to that specific district. We took an engine out of service, moved members from other units to balance out two other units, to have four instead of three people, made all of them paramedic units, which left us with our tillard truck. Our tillard truck is, does not have any paramedics on it, but it was not able to be housed at Station One, as it had been for subsequent years. So we had to move it to one of the only places that we could house it indoors, which was at Station Six, and that's where it resides today. We are looking downrange to bring that back down to Station One and restaff that station in the future and provide that paramedic service.
So it wasn't a budgetary concern? It was really more of a practical measure, right?
It was a little of both at the time. We were having a similar issue, and so with retention of people, so there was a little, there was give and take on both sides, and we ended up short one unit.
Again, to reiterate, then, by your own admission, we had retention issues dating all the way back to 2018, then?
Correct, and even before that time, yes, sir.
Even before that even. Okay. All right, very good. Any members of council have any questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for public comment. Madam City Clerk, who's registered to comment?
I believe we have one speaker registered, and that would be Bernard.
Mr. Ferguson, if you want to speak, go register at the clerk, or I'm sorry, at the city council office right next door, if you would. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bernard, and I am a Fullerton resident. How absurd you want to wax poetic about the firefighters' wages and not provide proper compensation and claim that it's fiscal responsibility. Whatever increases only seem like large increases because you've knowingly been underpaying them. For how long? The entire time that Mr. Whitaker has been on the dais, that's for sure. This is directly jeopardizing our livelihoods. There should be substantial raises that wouldn't even come close to restoring them to what they should be paid. Speaking of Mr. Whitaker, how dare you? I have less than zero doubt that Captain Dan Lancaster messaged you. You were the one who didn't read it. You were the one who didn't respond, but somehow it's Captain Dan Lancaster's fault. How do I know? Because Captain Dan Lancaster always responds and understands that word is bond. He always responds like a proper adult human being, always. But I stopped emailing you years ago because you never responded, never. How dare you try to sow seeds of doubt into Captain Dan Lancaster's character and our firefighters' commitment to our well-being? You know, the thing that Mr. Jung joking, mockingly jokes about. Timeout. Speaking of Dick Jones, or maybe this is a question for de facto head of IT, Chief Dunn, but how does Mr. Whitaker get away with still using his personal email address? Pun intended. Is it because he's grandfathered in? Same bat buffoons, same bat buffoonery. Go Bruins.
Next comment. Madam City Clerk, who?
I have no other speakers registered in chambers, and I see no hands raised on Zoom.
All right, very well. We'll bring this back to council.
Section 549.3, the Brown Act, I don't have to register. It's a formality, so I'd like to be able to make my comment.
My answer to that is no. I asked you to register in the room.
That's a violation of the Brown Act. Unless you want to get sued, allow me to make my comment.
My answer would be no, but I would.
But I'll stand here and make it anyways, because you're violating the law.
Excuse me. I'll seek advice with the city attorney. I'll seek advice with the city attorney. Go ahead, sir.
He's allowed to speak.
All right, there you go. Easy enough, you got your way.
The posting of the recording in advance is a policy, not a law.
Thank you. Yeah, don't mess with me on the law. So, now, I will play with your formalities and I will register to speak when you, as a council, respect the public. This item is a slap in the face. I'm actually going to give Councilmember Charles a pass on this because she wasn't around for all the shenanigans that have led to this. But by doing this the way you're doing it, you're blowing a one point eight million dollar hole in a budget that we already have a structural deficit, we spend more than we bring in. And then the next year, a two point eight million dollar hole in the budget and then three point, it just keeps going up and there's no way to fund it. You read the staff report and they're like, we'll figure it out someday. The honest answer is you're gonna either gonna cut everything or you're gonna put a tax on the ballot. So the honest way to approach this, in the year and a half you guys have been dealing with this since you first pulled the item and had, took the bid from OCFA, was to put a tax in front of the voters so you could actually fund this. But instead, you're just gonna fund it with money we don't have and then cut everything like the government always does and then go, oh my goodness, we have nothing now, and then put a tax in front of us. The MOU doesn't expire until June. You still have a couple of months to scramble together and decide that you're gonna put the tax on the ballot, that you're gonna put on the ballot and do this with integrity and honesty and follow the process in a legitimate manner instead of just backdooring a tax by passing this first and spending money that the staff report itself says we don't have. Show me in the staff report where you're funding this for the budget process that starts in April, the budget that gets approved in June. Show me where the one point eight million dollars is coming from and then the two point eight and so on. We, as a community, deserve to know how you plan to fund this. Because again, Councilman Zara's alluded to it, we're gonna need a tax. You guys tried to pass in Measure S, it got slapped down. You could have tried to get in the midterms, you chose not to. So do it with honesty and integrity and show us how you're gonna pay for it. And if it's gonna be a tax, approve the tax so we know it's coming next year on the ballot and then pass the MOU. You have four months about before you have to do all that. Be nice if you gave us the respect you demand from us. Thank you.
Any other comments, Madam City Clerk?
No other comments.
All right, very well. We'll bring this back to council. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Zara?
Yes, thank you. I have a question. So in the, it says here, the proposal will remain more cost-effective for the city compared to OCFA proposal. Can I get just a little bit more clarity on that little sentence there? Because I think that with this increase, there's still going to be additional things that we have to pay for the department, correct? Like we're not, just for the public to know, how is this more cost-effective?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Zara, I don't have the specifics on doing a dollar-for-dollar comparison right in front of me, but based on the OCFA proposal, this came in under what that was at on an annual basis when you went out onto the future years. We can get that and send that to the council. I would say there were also other, I would say, items not in the OCFA that they had alluded to that they would come back in two years, potentially to look at another engine similar to what we have in our, in our financial projection of bringing an engine back down to having two apparatus in Station One and then putting the other one in Station Six. OCFA and their proposal did not have that, but had said that they would evaluate that in two years. So that was a cost that wasn't in their proposal, that could have been a cost that could have come back to the council.
So, because the reason I'm asking this is because this was, this is the alternative presented to us from going with OCFA. And I thought it would have been nice to have that for the public to compare, like what our action today is, is going to help assumingly bring up, fill up the twenty-five percent vacancy that we have, bring a paramedic to District One, get the public safety that our community deserves and all the while retain our firefighters and then give them the dignity they deserve in pay as compared to other agencies. That was the idea, correct? So it would have been nice to see a little bit of a comparison there. The other thing is, this is a gradual, I remember from the OCFA proposal, it was sixteen percent that we were below the market, the market rate for hiring and for pay, for pay scale. So we won't achieve that for another five years at least. So all this while, we are still gonna be, our firefighters are still gonna be under the pay scale significantly, correct?
I would say that they're closer to the median than they are currently with this proposal. They probably are below the median based on what the management partner's study showed.
Right, which is what we paid for. The study we paid for.
We had a shared cost with the firefighters' union on that, yes.
And so, we're not really, like if we had gone with OCFA, we would have had everything we need immediately, but now we're just kind of gradually having to build this up over the next five years. And during this time, considering the way inflation is and market rates are, there may be, one can predict that in five years, they'll still remain underpaid because other agencies are gonna start increasing. They'll negotiate and they'll go up. So we'll always be under. We're never gonna be able to properly give our firefighters dignity and also to provide the adequate services that we need for our residents because we're always gonna be playing catch-up. Unless we, in five years, do another significant jump and Mr. Ferguson is right, in the sense, how are we gonna pay for all of that? Our ARPA funds are gonna be depleted, so what is our long-term gain, game here? What's our plan for this?
So I don't know if that's a statement or a question, I don't, I don't know how to answer.
A little bit of both, just for food for thought, I think. But for us to start really seriously looking at, how are we gonna pay for adequate services? And so. But I think that, I'm still talking. But I think that we deserve to, our community deserves the honest truth and this, I think, is a compromise from our firefighters and I appreciate that. But it, in my opinion, is not enough and is not adequate enough. We had a year and a half and more and obviously years and years of neglecting this particular topic of staffing in general and cuts and cuts and cuts. So with that, I think we just need to make sure that we are transparent and not, we're not presenting this as some sort of victory or bragging about something. This is less than what they deserve and it is less than adequate, but it is what, all we could do at this point. And with that, I will make the motion.
All right. In the interest of true telling, I suppose, since you seem to be on that subject matter, you want to talk about true telling, perhaps, you know, the sponsorship from the Fullerton Fighters Association, your last election has clouded your judgment here, but let's make sure we tell fact for fact. This wasn't an alternative, sir. This was a plan that was worked on for months by members of this council, including yourself, to make sure that decades worth of neglect from other councils and other iterations, some which you sat on, were caught up so our, so valued firefighters, as you would say, kept their dignity. So this notion that you're saying, well, this is a victory lap, the only victory lap I see you taking is you. No one here is taking that lap. We're all concerned about the city.
There's really no reason to personalize, honestly.
You didn't? And you didn't.
I was talking generally, I never mentioned you. Never mentioned you.
All right, very well, sir. Yes, Councilmember Charles.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. As some of you might have seen when I was here in October and also I was, you might have seen my large signs being endorsed by the Firefighters Association, I did speak out in behalf of the movement to OCFA. And I was disappointed in the vote that the council took at the time. But, you know, you move on and this is what's negotiated and I, in speaking to the firefighters myself, I have to say, the commitment of those wonderful employees of this city who are in the jobs that they're in and want to stay in the jobs and want to stay with our city to build this city up and to build this fire department is incredibly heartening in that I, it gives me faith for the future. And in October, I was very worried, I was very concerned. I had sent an email to all the council members, which was obvious they read and responded to and at the time being just in public comment, I couldn't say anything back, but at least I appreciated that they had taken the time to read it, even if we didn't agree. And now that we're in this position, I'm heartened also to see that the Fullerton Firefighters Association overwhelmingly voted to support this contract, that we're already seeing some movement towards people saying they would like to stay with our fire department and see where this contract goes. We're seeing that in the slowdown of people leaving and we're seeing that in the numbers. We're going to be tracking those numbers as we move forward. In terms of looking at retention, I know our human resources department is hard at work and keeps track of everyone who leaves and why. And that's something we're gonna be examining, hopefully, as this goes forward. Not to say that anything is perfect, you know, it's a product of compromise and negotiation, but I have faith that our Fullerton firefighters, when they looked at this, recognized it and overwhelmingly supported it. And it gives me, gives me reason to support it here, knowing that it will help our Fullerton Fire Department rebuild in this next four years. And if it needs to be reevaluated or things start going horribly off the rails, I'm sure we'll be informed on that and we'll be keeping a close eye because when I talk to constituents out there and people, I ask people, what's on your mind? Of course, I knocked on a lot of doors last year. I'll tell you, there are some people who spontaneously brought up that tax that they voted against and they said to me these words, they said, look, we voted against, I voted against that tax because it was so general and so broad, but if you had told me that if it was for the streets or for the firefighters, and I'm not kidding, multiple people said this to me, if you had just told me that it was for, I would have voted for it. So I know that our community supports the firefighters. Eventually, I hope what we're, how we're going to be funding this whole is honestly, I am working my own hours as a part-time employee here, but keeping this as a full-time job, trying to get economic development, at least over on my side of the city. And I know Councilman Zara has been certainly promoting our harbor corridor and all the things in District Five and all the commerce over there. Our two districts have quite a bit of the commerce of this city and we're working really hard to try and get economic development to raise funds for this city through revenue of sales tax of other people coming here and buying things and doing things and making this a city that they think of as a destination to do that so we can raise our general budget. And that might be a little bit of pie-in-the-sky optimism of a first-month council member, but I'm not jaded yet and we're gonna keep working on it and keep talking about it. And I appreciate though, the comments that were made that I think show that compromise, unfortunately, sometimes doesn't make anybody perfectly happy. But I just want to speak and say that this, at this point, this is the best compromise we have with the situation we're in.
All right, very well. Thank you, council member. Any other comments from council? Councilmember Dunlap?
You know, I, I agree with Councilmember Charles in that, you know, this compromise doesn't make anybody or everybody happy. And I think the reality is, if you followed any of the, any of my comments in some of the previous council meetings in the lead-up to the vote on the OCFA switch, you know my feelings about, you know, retaining local control and, you know, trying our best to support and retain our fire department here, the Fullerton Fire Department. But the question tonight is, it was, I think there was a concern shared about character. This has nothing to do with character. It has everything to do with cost. And the reality, I think, as some of the commentators shared, is that, you know, the city just does not have the funds to support this, you know, this extreme increase, right, over the timeframe. And I think the reality is, you know, the city, and there's been some negative comments made about, you know, the cuts and adjustment to the city's spending and surely, nobody has enjoyed that, right? The belt tightening, so to speak. But the reality is, yeah, that took, I think, weeks and months of collective discussions and work to get to a position where the city was actually able to restore some of its reserves and to, really to get out of the red and back into the black. But this is quite the course reversal. And so, I won't be supporting the item tonight. You know, unfortunately, I just, the costs are too extreme and I think this is gonna be very challenging for the city to deal with. And, you know, unfortunately, I, it wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't surprise me if, as some of the people have commented this evening, if this is, in a sense, a backdoor tax. And, you know, unlike Councilmember Charles, you know, when I campaigned several years ago, you know, people actually expressed concern about the road, streets and infrastructure and expressed interest in a special tax to fix the road, streets and infrastructure, you know, not to go to the general fund that would essentially create a slush fund to, you know, to heap on significant pay increases. And so that was the feedback that I got at that time and that, that sort of explains the, you know, kind of the detail behind my opinion, my view.
All right, sir, thank you. Mr. Mayor Protem, any thoughts, sir?
Just to try to avoid anything sinking into finger-pointing mostly, I just want to say that it's long been a goal of mine on this council because we've been saddled with a structural budget imbalance for many years. And it's long been a goal for us to be able to resolve that. I don't know whether it's because certain people think they profit by always being on the ropes to perhaps validate new taxes, but in the end, if your budget is structurally imbalanced, you're either not taxing people enough or you're spending too much. And my concern with this agreement is it makes that goal of correcting that problem even harder to reach at this point.
Understood. Well, there is a motion that is on the table. If there's a second, we'll move to a vote.
I second.
Councilmember? All right. Madam City Clerk, before we vote, just very quick, this is a twelve point five million dollar budget wait for the next four years, but promise is made, promise is kept, so. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Charles?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunlap?
No.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker?
No.
And Mayor Jung?
Aye.
Passes three to two.
Next item on the agenda is proposed side letter memorandum of agreement between the City of Fullerton and Fullerton Firefighter Management Association. All right, Mr. Manfred, good evening again.
Thank you again. First, to clarify, this side letter is not the product of any extensive economic negotiations with the Fullerton Management Association. Those have been kind of tabled while we worked through the Firefighters Association, but there are a couple of matters that we are taking care of with this side letter agreement. The, the main item is to transfer a classification of emergency medical services manager, which was recently created, but put into the General Management Association. We're moving it from the General Management Association to the Fullerton Fire Management Association. We believe it belongs there more appropriately. And so this side letter effectuates that transfer, which has been agreed to by both units and specifies certain terms of compensation and employment that weren't otherwise addressed currently in the Fire Management Association. So just wanted to make sure you understood the genesis of this. And then we've also taken the opportunity to make some clarifications to the fire battalion chief classification specification. I just covered that slide, so next slide, please. So again, as I said, this, it says negotiations background, but this is a very narrow scope and a very quick negotiation. but this is a very narrow scope and a very quick negotiation. Really, just an agreement to move one classification from one unit to another and to amend a job description for Fire Battalion Chief. I will say, it does, the amendment to the Fire Battalion Chief is fairly important in that, for the first time, we've really, in writing, clarified some of the roles of Division Chief, Deputy Chief, and Fire Marshal. Those have always been assignments, but the written word hasn't clearly spelled out their duties, and this will take care of that. So again, some of the specifics of the side letter. Again, it transfers a non-sworn Emergency Medical Services Manager from the Fullerton Management Association to the Fullerton Fire Management Association. Some of the major things it does is because, this is the first time, a non-sworn has been added to that unit. We had to add in language clarifying how retirement and workers' compensation would be applied. And basically, we just lifted language from the regular Fullerton Fire Management Association and dropped it into the Fullerton Fire Management Association. We also had to make some exclusions for certain assignment pay that are available only to sworn classifications. Next slide. There is no fiscal impact as a result of these changes. The position is already in the city budget, just in a different bargaining unit. And again, back to Fire Battalion Chief, which is a comment that's not shown on this slide. We are updating some obsolete language to qualifications, making available some promotional opportunities for people that are enacting Fire Battalion Chief assignment and are going through certain promotional requirements. And then, like I said before, we are clarifying the roles of Division Chief, Deputy Chief, and Fire Marshal, which are offshoots of the Battalion Chief assignment, but now more adequately clarified.
All right, thank you, sir. We'll bring it back to council for any questions of Director Manfred. Seeing none, we'll go to public comments. Anybody registered to speak this evening?
One speaker registered for Rudarik.
Mr. Rudarik, good evening.
Thank you once again. In Africa, we say that you cannot lift a hut, a hut of H U T, that the traditional houses alone. You have to call members of the community to apply, help you to uplift it and put it on top of the structure you put. The reason why I make reference to that, that it seems city of Fullerton, I do not know what happened. In the month of September or October, they refused to join the bigger family of Orange County Fire Authority, given the comments even I've heard among the council members here. We have, our budget is very skeleton, it's very inadequate, all kind of things. You people, the council members, you have the power to alter, to change, so long as you touch the core area of the Constitution. You can recall the decision you made and make sure that you may, if you agree, to join the larger family. I've seen major cities with large, big budget portfolio joining the Orange County Fire Authority. Why is Fullerton, despite its very mega budget, they don't want to join the family? I don't know the intrigue or the interior of what was going on in the contract there. But I feel that for the, for the safetiness and for the security and all other things, as since, you know, in the next two months, we'd venture in the dry spell of the Santa Ana Wind, all those fires of California, La Cia, so even our governor was fighting for the fire somewhere up north. So, to join that, I feel if they join that, it's good for the community of Fullerton residents. So it's my plea, it's my pleading to you guys, if you can reconsider that and join the bigger family. Because given the comment made here, we have very, very little budget. The firefighters are not adequately paid. Yeah, it's not good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any comments on Zoom?
No Zoom comments.
All right, very well. We'll bring this back to council. I'll seek a motion if there are no comments.
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Charles, second.
Very well. With that, before we take this vote, just a comment to our fire chief. This is, the tools necessary serve better than any council's given in recent memory, if ever. And I expect some conventional and not-so-conventional public outreach to express just that. It would be, it'd be otherwise anyways. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Charles.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Very well. The next item on our list is traffic safety and initiatives update. We have City Engineer Stephen Bice. Good evening, sir.
Yes, good evening, council. Stephen Bice, City Engineer. I'm going to be a co-presenter with Lieutenant Bogart from RPD on this one. So this is a general presentation on our traffic safety initiatives that we've been working on throughout the city. There is a PowerPoint presentation, I believe IT's pulling it up right now. Okay, first, I'd like to touch on just the general roles and responsibilities of our Traffic Engineering Division and Public Works. There are several items here, so bear with me. Maintain a reliable and coordinated traffic signal system citywide, which consists of 154 traffic signals, which will be increasing over the next couple of years. Review, revise, and update traffic circulation and progression, parking utilization, bicycle mobility, and pedestrian safety measures based on changes in citywide needs and standards as necessary. Seek transportation funding, grant funding opportunities whenever available. We are a liaison to the Transportation and Circulation Commission. Review traffic impacts from private development, support development of conditions of approval. We manage traffic-related capital improvement projects, including regional traffic signal synchronization program with OCTA. And we also coordinate heavily with the Fullerton School District, Police Department, and residents. Next slide, please. And considering the plethora of duties, our city staff consists of one full-time associate engineer with Jeffrey Chinchilla, and we recently just hired an engineering aide, who's just about three weeks on the job. And we do have an on-call consultant, LLG Engineers, which consists of our city traffic engineer, Dave Roseman. Next slide, please. So the first three initiatives that we're working on are related to traffic signal timing. So every one of our signalized intersections has a traffic signal controller in it, which is secured in a traffic signal cabinet. There are dozens of different parameters that are input into these controllers based on the configuration of the intersection, the phasing, and various, various other items. So, the first, the first item that I want to talk to, discuss, is red clearance interval. So this is an optional parameter. It can be zero, or it can be calculated based on the width of an intersection. Our new practice is to implement a minimum of a one-second, maximum of a two-second, all-red clearance interval. Currently, there's probably, probably a 10% of our intersections, there is some type of all-red clearance interval, but that's 90%, which there is none. So we feel that this is an important safety improvement that we are going to start implementing at all of our signals. It ultimately will provide more times for vehicles to clear an intersection prior to the opposing movement getting a green light. So basically, it's an intersection that's literally all-red for a minimum of a second. Next slide, please. Another parameter that we took a look at is our pedestrian change interval, which also is the flashing "Don't Walk." So this is the upright hand, it's intended to allow pedestrians already in the intersection to reach the far end of the traveled way, but not allow any new pedestrians to enter the crosswalk. There's, our new practice to provide additional time for pedestrians based on the definition of a traveled way. So that's highlighted there in the PowerPoint. So a traveled way unfortunately is a relative term in traffic engineering. So we reevaluated what our definition is of a traveled way. And what that did is it extends the walking time for all pedestrians in every crosswalk at a signalized intersection, once implemented. We do also, I just want to make note, we do have a current CIP project that will solve our 500 countdown pedestrian indicators, and that's what you see as the picture to the side. After that is implemented, every single one of our 154 intersections, signalized intersections, will all be, have countdown pedestrian indications. Next slide, please. The third interval that we looked at is a minimum bike-green interval. So there are minimum green intervals for vehicles. Here in California, it is a bike-progressive state, and there is conditions and requirements and guidelines on minimum bike-green. And essentially, what this is, is it provides enough time for a cyclist to make a movement through an intersection, given it's slower than a vehicle. So we have to evaluate the intersection, evaluate the needs, and provide sufficient minimum bike-green time for a cyclist to go from, you know, one side of the intersection to the other. And so, this can vary, again, based on the alignment of the intersection, the phasing, and other different elements. Next slide, please. That's a little graphic, next slide. Okay, so with those, those are the three signal-timing parameters that we've looked at. All are safety enhancements. However, there's a caveat, there's, there's always a compromise, so forth. So with extending the pedestrian crossing time, with adding the red interval, with implementing all bicycle green, minimum green time, it is going to extend the cycle length of our intersections, which means it will take a little bit longer from crossing, you know, crossing the state, or the city limits. So going from point A to point B, once these are all implemented, it will take slightly longer. So we felt that these are important to implement because we are taking a more multimodal approach at our signalized intersections. And we feel that this is a benefit overall, even though it will take a little longer when, when you're driving through the city. So the next, I'll go back. Okay, so the other, one of the other things that we've done is we've completed what's called a local road safety plan. So this was partially funded by the federal government, completed in 2022. What it was is it analyzed citywide systemic collisions. And we, we gathered data from 2014 to 2019, a five-year period. And we had a consultant basically break down the data citywide to find out focus areas. Where's our focus areas that have high severity or high frequency collisions? And then it was essentially scored based on severity, based on the type of collision and so forth. And it provided these focus areas, and it also recommended different improvements. You know, how can we mitigate some of these focus areas to reduce the severity or frequency of collisions? So this was, this report was required for us to apply to Highway Safety Improvement Grant, HSIP. So luckily, we were able to complete that in time for this latest cycle of HSIP. So we do have an application currently pending for six signal modifications in about a mile and a half of street lighting along Orange Tharp, which was identified as a focus area in LRSP. We also have previously, were awarded two HSIP awards, one for the 500 countdown pedestrians that I mentioned earlier, and the others for 16 rapid rectangular flashing beacons, otherwise RFBs, at various places throughout the city. And what, and what those are, are, they're, they're literally flashing beacons at uncontrolled crosswalks. So those have already been awarded to contractors and should be in construction fairly soon. Next slide, please. Safe Streets and Roads for All is a new grant. It's a new federal grant that is funded through the bipartisan infrastructure law. It supports planning, infrastructure, behavioral, and operational initiatives to prevent death and serious injuries to our roadways. So we felt it was important to apply to this grant. And it does say here, the bullet, well, we applied for a comprehensive action plan. And this was just late in '22. And it says, "if awarded," but we have good news. Last week, we were notified, we are being recommended for award. So what it is, is going to be the development of a comprehensive action plan. And what that really is, is a more robust local road safety plan. So it's really looking at a lot of the same kind of data, but even more so. It's going to be doing a lot more community outreach, stakeholder engagement, and getting to the bottom of how, how we can make our streets a little safer. So once that's allocated, we'll engage a consultant, and then we'll start the development of that plan. Against the, the planning efforts here will ultimately be used to pursue implementation grants. So really, we got to do the, the work upfront in the planning phase to be more competitive for the implementation pursuits. So that's really, this is the start of that, that effort. And next slide. Focus on schools. So our Traffic Engineering Division is continuously coordinating with the Fullerton School District, especially the rich risk management group. So what we have been doing is being pretty proactive about safety assessments around our school campuses, especially elementary schools. So the image on this slide is Sunset Lane Elementary. So we performed a safety assessment here. We proposed some recommendations based on field visits, talking with principals, talking with staff, talking with the district. These improvements went to the Transportation and Circulation Commission for consideration, and ultimately was recommended, went to this council, was approved, and now has been installed. So we're trying to be more proactive about doing these assessments around our, our schools, which looks at, like I said, traffic control, striping upgrades, and parking restrictions, and amongst other things. We also do, according with the district, on crossy card studies. So that's a collaboration between city, district, and the school, which includes a warrant study. So that, we go and collect counts, we do a warrant analysis at the location, see if warrants are met, and then again, it goes to TCC for, for consideration either way. Next slide. And this is kind of a, also related to focus on schools. So we, the city, the school district, and several schools, we've been in contact with SCAG, especially their GO Human Division. And what this is, is it provides really good messaging for our children, our parents, and just drivers in general, to just, you know, be a little bit, like, drive safely, drive safely, be a little bit more conscious, especially around schools. And what our goal is to, we just had a really good working session where we're putting together a tailored media campaign that will be put on, hopefully, our social media, the district's social media, would be presented, you know, at some of the schools. And I think it's going to be really powerful. It's gonna, it's gonna be very engaging for, for our youth. So that's some of the efforts that also have to do with our focus on schools. Next slide, please. Okay, street and intersection safety lighting. I think there was public comment earlier about this. So we are definitely taking another look at our intersection safety lighting. That's where we're starting. Street lighting in general is a bigger topic, but we're, we're starting there because that's our focus area. That's where the most multimodal interaction and conflict points are, are at our signalized intersections, where pedestrians, bikes, cars are all crossing each other. So besides what we're, what we're talking about, signal phasing and all of the different timing parameters I spoke about earlier, just general illumination of these locations is important. So there is something called the Illuminating Engineering Society, believe it or not. IES, and so they provided standards, not only for intersections, but street lighting in general. So we're taking a little bit closer look at their standards relative to what we have and what we want. So, long story short, we're increasing our output in color at signalized intersections. It is going to be an expensive endeavor, and it's going to take some time to roll this out. However, we are going to condition development to upgrade the existing lighting and install additional intersection lighting, if there's a nexus there. But we're also going to be working with either a signal maintenance staff or get a CIP project together to, to have a rolling upgrade. So we feel it will be important and improve the safety at our signalized intersections. Next slide, please. Complete Streets and Multimodal Equity. So Complete Streets is, is a, is something that everyone kind of talks about and hears. It means a lot of different things. There's really nice toolboxes, toolkits out there with a lot of different features. I just want to read a couple things that I thought were interesting related to Complete Streets. So safe routes, it really is safe routes for all modes of transportation and requires humans, human-centered thinking. Acknowledging the needs for pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, and automobile drivers of all ages and abilities. There's no standard template for Complete Streets, and they respond to environmental characteristics, community needs, and types of mobility devices. So what staff does, considering we are in maintenance mode as a public works department, we don't have a robust amount of funds to do a lot to our roads. We're really focused on just getting new pavement on the ground, fixing our uplifted sidewalks and so forth. But we do look at each maintenance project with a unique perspective, on a complete, complete streets perspective as well. How can we improve the experience for pedestrians? Can we enhance the bike facilities in any way? So this is an approach we're taking. There is a good example that's going to be coming forward. On Associated Road, we have a maintenance project proposed. We coordinate with OCTA on this as well. We're proposing a lane reduction, enhanced bike facilities, more parking along Associated Route from Bastion Chair to Imperial, which went to TCC last night and is going to ATC when, when we do meet, I think, later this month. So that's a good example of how staff is taking a more Complete Streets approach to our maintenance projects. And I just wanted to be clear, the maintenance project, it is difficult to do this on a lot of our streets because we're really constrained by our right-of-way and funding. And usually, it needs extreme vetting through our community to be successful. So we felt Associated Road, that was appropriate, given, given the land use, given the, the traffic volumes, and given the lack of parking in the area. And I believe that's it for me, so I'm going to tag out with Lieutenant Bogart to talk about the police department.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Tony Bogart. I'm a lieutenant with the Fullerton Police Department. Currently, I work as a patrol watch commander, but I also oversee our traffic bureau. So I just wanted to take a little time just to give So I just wanted to take a little time just to give council an update on, on where our traffic bureau is at the police department. Next slide, please. So some of the roles and responsibilities of our traffic bureau at the police department. One of the things, and I kind of started off with this, is we have, we've had a long partnership with traffic engineering for many years, and, and in my time at the police department, we've worked hand in hand to make sure that we work towards the safety of our roads through the engineering part, and also for the enforcement part, too. Our, our traffic division, the focus is the enforcement, the vehicle code, California Vehicle Code, and also the municipal code regarding to, regarding traffic safety. That also includes enforcement of parking laws throughout our city. Our current staffing of the traffic bureau, we have three motorcycle officers currently, and I'll talk a little bit more about them in a little bit. We have two parking control officers, we have two collision investigators, with their primary role is to investigate serious collisions and fatalities, and also hit and run investigations. And we do have one part-time consultant that works as our commercial enforcement officer, with our focus on commercial vehicles throughout the city and the laws reference, that reference them. Next slide. So our motorcycle officers, in, in this last August, we had the ability to redeploy our motorcycle unit. We've actually, in, in '21, we actually had to shut down that unit due to staffing issues. So we were able to get the motorcycles back out. As I mentioned, there's three officers assigned, and they're focusing, their major focus is enforcement right now. I think one of, in public comment, one of the speakers had mentioned that they've seen the motorcycle officers on Harbor a lot lately, so that's a, that's been a big focus for, for them lately. They also are responsible for investigating traffic collisions. Their enforcement focus is moving violations that are the top causes for traffic collisions, which includes speeding, which is the number one, red light violations, and also yield violations. Next slide. And for parking enforcement, we, our parking control officers, we, they're responsible for enforcing parking laws and towing abandoned and illegally, illegally, excuse me, parked vehicles within the city. Just this last month, we're, we were fortunate to fill a vacancy for our parking control officer, so now we're at our authorized level of two. And also, the department, we're still in contract with SP Plus to provide parking enforcement services throughout the city, but their main focus is on the time zone areas in the downtown business district, and also street sweeping, and also early morning parking, the early morning parking ordinance. Next slide. Some of the programs that we've been involved with for many years is our partnership with the California Office of Traffic Safety. These are, these are grant monies that have been awarded, just actually annually for, for many, many years, that provide funding for staff to, to do focus enforcement, enforcement on these top violations that cause traffic collisions, also for, with a major focus on drug and impaired driving, and also DUI checkpoints that we have regularly throughout the year. I think this last, I think this last grant cycle, we had six, and then coming up to this next year, we'll have four throughout the year. Next slide. Now's the time for questions for, for Mr. Vice or I.
All right, any questions from council members?
Of course.
Councilmember Charles.
Should I do my whole list all at once, or should I let others have a turn, too? I'm sorry, this is, to me, very fascinating stuff, and I really appreciate you taking the time, both of you, to go in depth on this issue. We've had so many public comments about the issues of elderly and disabled people trying to cross the streets, of the accidents, we just, you know, have all of these things swirling around on this, some of our streets seem more like freeways when they're 50 mile per hour zones, you know, in Orange Thorpe and Bastion Cherry. So really appreciate you taking the time to go into it. I have questions for both of you, so I guess I'll start with Lieutenant, since he was already there. So I know that in the past, your department worked with the Cal State Fullerton Police Department, but I know that they have been undergoing police chief changes, and they're going staffing. I'm just wondering, kind of, if you have an update on, on how you're working with them now that you've restaffed up with the motorcycle officers and that kind of thing?
Yes, we, we do work collaboratively with Cal State Fullerton's Police Department. I believe they have one motor officer that's assigned right now. We actually do regular training with, with them. Some of the, some of the plans as we go into this year is to kind of have more of a regional approach to some of, some of these traffic issues, whether it's neighboring agencies. And in the past, we've had a task force of, of kind of, of multiple agencies, mostly in North Orange County, and my plan as we go into this year is to get that started again.
Okay, so to clarify, working with like the Placentia Police Department and Brea, okay, they also have their own forces.
And La Habra as well.
And La Habra, okay, great, thank you. And then going, moving over to the straider traffic side, early in your presentation, you were talking about the countdowns, and, and those seem to be pretty important for the folks that are very concerned about being hit before they get crossing the street. But we didn't really get quite a firm timeframe. Do we have any kind of idea of the timeframe of when that's going to be implemented, putting all those in?
So the contract was awarded to a contractor, now it's just going through the paperwork, so, and then the ordering, so there's long lead times on a lot of equipment these days, unfortunately. I don't have a solid timeframe now, but it will happen in the next, I would say, four months.
Okay, that's honestly, from an academic standpoint, that's lightning fast. So four months, if we could say by summer, things are better, that's, that's really great. And I'm excited to see that you were able to get some bipartisan infrastructure law money, that is fantastic. Love to see more of that as much as we can, but can we tell what the dollar amount is? You didn't mention a dollar amount, and I think that's important.
Oh yeah, sure, so we're being recommended for award, it's still not official, but it's, it's likely we'll get it. $200,000 will be funded through the federal government with a $50,000 match from a local match.
Okay, and so that will be a start for doing that plan, and then a basis for maybe implementing complete streets and getting more funding for that later as we move forward?
This grant is, the study is really geared toward safety, so it's geared toward reducing fatalities and serious injuries, and not necessarily complete streets. There might be some elements that make sense implementing to, for that reduction. So it's a, it's a really robust study and analysis to see how can we mitigate that citywide, based on our collision history.
Yeah, and absolutely on Orange Thorpe.
Yeah, and then yes, to, to answer your question, you need the plan in place to be competitive for the implementation funds, and sometimes it's absolutely required, so if we don't even have this, we're not even eligible to apply. So it's really important that you start here, get this plan, we, this is the first step, right? We got the grant, we do the plan, and then we're in a better position to pursue the implementation, the bigger money that actually people will see in, you know, their day-to-day life.
Yeah, that's great, and then my last thing, and I'll let other council members get a word in edgewise, sorry. But, so I'm very interested, you mentioned working with the school districts, and certainly partnership with FSD is very important when you're talking about elementary schools. But I also want to point out, in terms of other schools, that might not have, you know, made it to being a part of your team yet, and I hope will in the future, please don't forget, we also have Placentia Yorba Linda district schools. I know those elementary schools aren't located in the Fullerton borders, but they're literally across the street from the Fullerton Gem District, thinking of Topaz Elementary, thinking of Sierra Vista, which is, you know, right around the corner from where I live, and those other schools in that other district that might also benefit from a partnership, not to say that we should, you know, fund what they're doing, but I think that we could probably do something mutually beneficial there along the lines of what we're doing with Fullerton schools, since those are schools that Fullerton kids are going to. When you live in Fullerton and you're on that side of the city, those are the schools you go to. And I would also just want to make sure that you're aware that I'm very interested in that associated road restructuring that you talked about, not just because it's in my district, but also, you know, constituents over the, it was a Christmas holiday, I believe, it was a winter break, maybe it was New Year's, but one of the holidays, there was a pothole so bad with the storms that it was blowing out tires, and you folks fixed it in less than, less than 12 hours, I think it was, it was really quite remarkable, which is great, but people are still interested in having the entire stretch fixed from Bastion Cherry to Imperial. So I just want to make sure that you know, to please keep me updated as this process goes along, and let me know what the timeframe is on that, too. That'd be very helpful.
Yeah, I could elaborate a little, so it's actually two separate projects. It's going all the way from Yorba Linda to Imperial, actually, so Phase One is just from Yorba Linda to Bastion Cherry, that small stretch just north of Cal State. And then the second phase is actually from Rolling Hills to Imperial, but we've incorporated that middle gap, we're going to slowly seal it so we can restripe the whole thing, it'll all be nice and good. So we're still in design phase, so that's still a ways out. So that, that has even hit the street for bid. So we're looking probably six months to a year out.
All right, anything further from members of council? Councilmember Zara?
Thank you very much, both of you, Lieutenant Bogart, and great work from Public Works as well. I, I just wanted to, one specific thing, and then a couple of broad asks. The Wilshire Circles, the roundabout there, roundabouts, I don't know anyone who, I've talked to that lived there that hasn't complained about speeding there, and safety, and a lot of different concerns. In looking at all of what we're doing and moving forward, maybe we can take a look at ways of how to improve traffic safety there, because I know in the past, there was an idea to, to study the traffic, driver behavior there, and then speeding, and then, you know, do, do a little study there to see, but maybe we can look into that. I know that was a discussion prior to COVID, I don't know what, what happened to it, but definitely something if you can keep that in mind and look into, into that, because that is a bike route as well, and it is really important that we maintain the safety on that route. So it, it becomes a successful endeavor. The other thing is when, I, I like the idea of, of human-centric sort of approach, and, but I, and really what I'd like to see is also looking at the, our seniors, and looking at folks with disabilities, so that we make, make sure that we're including everybody in how accessible our, our streets are going to be, and safe, and safety concerns for everybody. And, and really taking a proactive look, I know we've been very reactive in the past, but now it seems that we're starting to look ahead and anticipate issues, and that's really the best way to, to avoid problems. So I'm really happy about what, where this is going. I'd love to see a more concise version of this update, maybe put out for the public, maybe on social media, because one thing I would hate for all this work is for it to be buried in, in the website, and nobody will ever know about it. And it is a lot for even me to post about on Facebook, and everybody knows I post on Facebook a lot, but this is quite a lot. So it would really have maybe the Cliff Notes, and have some sort of announcement. But it would also be really great to do some, I know we're reaching out to school districts, but consider maybe reaching out to senior residences, and to maybe other community groups that would participate in better understanding of what we're doing, but also giving feedback to it as well. So that's all I have, thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I have time, anything, sir?
I have some questions, mostly involving moving violations and enforcement.
Sure.
But I believe that they can best be handled probably offline between now and our next council meeting.
Yes, sir.
So I will reserve that time.
All right, sir, understood. This is a receiving file item, but we will take public comments on this matter. Any members of the public register to comment? Madam City Clerk?
I have three in chambers and one hand, two hands raised in Zoom.
Very well, we'll take those in chambers first.
Okay, Anjali Tapadia, you are up first, and then next will be Jane Rans.
And then the third?
Ms. Johnson.
All right, if you can all prepare. Ms. Tapadia, good evening.
Hello. My name is Anjali Tapadia, I'm a Fullerton resident and an avid road bicyclist. Item 13 has not been presented before the Active Transportation Committee, because, as you know, the meetings keep getting canceled, including tomorrow's. I'm glad that we have a meeting on the 22nd, but I am taking the opportunity to present my comments here. I really appreciate the safety recommendations presented here. I think they indicate, like councilmember Zara said, a more proactive approach to traffic safety and road safety. That said, I would like to see more, because pedestrian bike fatalities have been increasing in the U.S. as well as on our streets for the past decade. The minimum green times for bicyclists, I agree, should be treated as a standard and applied at every intersection. We also need, however, leading pedestrian, leading pedestrian intervals at every single signalized intersection, so that cars can see pedestrians in front of them before they attempt to cross, like is being considered at the Fox Complex. We need raised pedestrian crossings like that at Wilshire and Lawrence. We also need protected bike lanes on all major arterials. Even our most recent road upgrades are still using outdated and dangerous painted bike lanes that offer no protection for bicyclists, bicycles, even on high-speed roadways. No bicyclist actually feels safe on painted bicycle lanes, like, for example, the one on Orange Thorpe, which is why the input of actual road bicyclists and the ATC need to be considered in plans like these. We have a real safety problem on our streets. We have acknowledged in public meetings that arterials are unsafe for bicyclists, cars continue to hit and kill pedestrians and bicyclists on our street, our ATC meetings keep getting canceled, and members of the public, like myself, continue to bring our safety issues to the city's attention. And I want to underscore broader generality about this, that paint is not infrastructure. Posted speed limits do not calm traffic. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure, and it's better to have good road design that prevents cars from going far too fast and posing a risk to pedestrians and bicyclists. It's far better to have that than to focus primarily on enforcement, signage, media, things like that. I would love to see better road design that takes these considerations into account and prevents these fatalities. It should not be this easy for cars to injure and kill our pedestrians and bicyclists. There are safe, cost-effective, and simple measures that we could be implementing, and I would love to see more of those. I look forward to commenting more at my first ATC meeting coming up, but I wanted to raise these considerations in regards to the safety plan that was presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rans? Good evening again.
Can I get a restart? Can I get a restart for one about here, please? Thank you. Good evening, once again, my name is Jane Rans, I'm also on the Active Transportation Committee. I'm the vice chair of that committee, but I am not speaking on behalf of that committee, I'm speaking on behalf of an active transportation user within our city. One of the things I'm highly concerned about is this plan that apparently has had, I believe the term was extreme community input, however, I want you to know that that plan for Associated Road never came to ATC, and we would not likely, we would likely have some concerns, I could bring them up here, maybe I should wait till, I'm assuming it's going to come to our committee, but there's a number of conflict points that it creates, safety issues. So for this plan, besides wanting it to come before, be vetted by the, the ATC, I am a little confounded by this discussion about how we're going to create some plans. It's great that we got funding, but we get a lot of funding for a lot of plans. What we need funding for, our grant funding, we should be applying for is for the implementation. Recently, the council approved Downtown Active Transportation Plan, that again, it was funded, it was grant funding, it was done by Alta Planning, and they went outside of just their initial area for, for downtown improvements, they extended, because they thought, well, connectivity for all users to be able to get in and out of the downtown. So we have that plan in place. I'm going to assume that some of this discussion here about the timing, that came from a recommendation from that plan, I don't see it referenced here, I'm just concerned that we're making plans and we're not using them. To mention a couple of other plans that are already in place, we have a connector plan that was funded. It created multiple alternatives, typically about three different funding alternatives for the east end of the city, near Cal State Fullerton, where we have a lot of pedestrian and a lot of... near Cal State Fullerton, where we have a lot of pedestrian and a lot of bicyclists going on and off campus. And as we're trying to provide more housing there, that's, you know, not car-centric, we really need to concentrate on that. There are plans to be implemented. We need to put our efforts into funding those plans. Also, the connector on the east side, again, it would connect up with what Matt Fokes is doing in Buena Park. One of the things he said when he promised us when he left, that he was going to make a plan in Buena Park that was going to match up with our plan. Now let's implement it. The other plan that's in place is our bike plans. I believe you all received an email from Vince Buck that he submitted to the council that identified there's four low-hanging fruit items affordable to make improvements for bike safety. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson? Good evening again.
Hello. I'd like to speak in support of these improvements are going to be a good thing, I think. I'm really eager to see the blinking countdown signs coming in everywhere. This for a long time has been difficult for bike riders, just to see that the hand and not know, you know, have to look back at the signal to be able to know, let bike riders know how much time they have. This is a safe, going to save lives, too. We had a, you know, someone rollerblading or something was was hit down, you know, about 10 years ago down by Cal State Fullerton. So it's not all about pedestrians and people that drive automobiles. I'd like to say about the delay feature on the stoplights. Sometimes when you compensate in traffic to improve something, it could actually create a different problem that you didn't think about. For instance, in another city, they brought back the stop sign lines to make it safer, but then the cars would go over the line, and then they wouldn't stop at all, and that creates fatalities. So as far as these stoplights, this could encourage maybe watch and see how it goes. It's encourage people to know that they have more time and actually encourage them to run red lights. There's a few other things I'd like to see in the package as far as correcting the traffic patterns. There's several lights, maybe 11 o'clock at night, that they're not on a magnetic meter. Las Palmas is one of them, where you stop. You, there's no cars there, and the light turns, and then there's a turn signal, and you wait longer. Things like that could encourage people also to run lights when the when the light patterns aren't reasonable. As far as improved lighting at the crosswalks, I'm happy to hear about that. We could still use a couple of lights going up the hill on Harbor Boulevard to St. Jude Hospital. I drive up there every night and have to turn my brights on because there's no way you could see a pedestrian walking up the hill. And we've actually had a fatality there in the last year, coming down the hill, hit by a bus. So we could use a sidewalk and a couple of lights there, and that should do it. I think my time's up. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, who's available on Zoom?
We have two hands raised in Zoom, and Jane Reifer, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening. Ms. Reifer?
Yes, thank you so much. It's very heartening to see these new initiatives for bicycle and pedestrian safety. It's also exciting to see the call for the ATC to start meeting on a regular basis. I believe they've missed over half their meetings last year and have had no meetings this year. And so one of the things, too, is to have the order of when things are seen. It seems like it would make more sense to have the ATC see things, then TNCC, then planning, and then council, rather than kind of this reverse method that we've been becoming accustomed to lately. Two additional things. It's very important that the ATC have agendized items that talk about new developments in town. And there was a little bit of a confusion last year when this was brought up, but I looked at the establishing resolution for that committee, and it says that the committee will make recommendations related to public or private development affecting active transportation, which shall be incorporated when applicable as part of the project approval process through the Planning Commission, Parks and Rec, City Council, and other city agencies as appropriate. So it's absolutely a purview of the ATC to look at developments. We've missed a lot of opportunities. I think the first development that, and only development that really ever came to ATC was the Fox Block. But this brings up the second issue, which is there weren't any, there were a lot of things left out of the pedestrian network for that block that should have already been in the plans. The cheapest way for the city to accomplish any of this is just have all those pedestrian and bike issues right in the design plans. So everybody's looking at them. Everybody's expecting them. And then the developers can fund their fair share. Our general plan policy, P 5.14, says fair share of improvements, support policies, regulations which require new development to pay a fair share of needed transportation improvements based on a project's impacts to the multimodal transportation network. So in the past, we didn't know that we wanted developers to pay their fair share of their impacts to sidewalks and bike and so forth. So now, with this research, we know that that's what this general plan intention was, and I hope we can get started on that. I'll just give you one little example. On the streetlights project, there's a pedestrian issue at Lemon and Valencia, and there are some planned improvements there, but it wasn't mentioned at all within the streetlights project. So there could have more coordination at the beginning, can save costs, can make sure some of these projects get done, and start contributing to better safety and convenience for our pedestrian and bicycle commuters. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is call-in user two. You should be able to unmute.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, Maureen.
Okay, thanks, Lucinda. Anyway, I brought this up last night at Trans and CIRK, and I do want the council and the staff to know about it. There is a crosswalk technology that is being studied at either UCLA or SC. It's called Ludar Technologies, and it's an Israeli company, and they're studying it for the upcoming Olympics in, I believe it's, what, '28. So if that's something that you might look into to see if it can help us also. I just heard a blurb on the news. I don't know what it's involved, but I thought I'd pass it on to you so you'd know about it and could look into it to see if it could help the city of Fullerton. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
And our last hand raised is caller number 2798. You should be able to unmute.
Good evening.
Hello. This is Debbie Stout. I'm the executive director of the Fullerton Collaborative, also the chair of the Health and Wellness Subcommittee. And I just would like to collaborate with the city, to also integrate the work from the federal grant into our Health and Wellness Strategic Plan, and support the safety development of our active transportation in the city, surrounding all the community engagement sites in Fullerton. And we have over 60 members that are actively engaged in the community, and the subcommittee is Vice President Stephen, and we've been able to meet with him, and would love to collaborate even more. And thank you for your time, and thank you for everything that you guys are doing. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Again, this is a receiving file item. We'll move on to the next.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just, I have just one follow-up.
Council member.
On this, I missed to mention, if we can look at the crosswalk on Commonwealth and Yale, I believe there's a cross, I'm not sure if it's exactly on Yale, but in that area, there's a crosswalk that a lot of residents on the south of Commonwealth, they cross over to walk their kids over to Raymond Elementary. And so, and there seems to be, there was a lot of concerns there because that's obviously a major street there. So if we can take a look at that as part of these studies. Thank you. That's all.
All right. Again, this is a receiving file item. We'll move on. But before we do, I want to give special attention to a gentleman that's sitting in the gallery right now. That is one of our commissioners, and I, since he wasn't here when we recognized him earlier, I would appreciate him coming out. Dear friend of mine, Hodel Haskalou.
Well, so we're going to present you with our recognition for your valued service on NREC, and this is from the dear Assemblywoman.
Great. Thank you very much.
For those in our community that may not know, Mr. Haskalou is the new general manager of the Met. Well, not so new.
Two years now.
All right. Well, anyhow, he's found it gracious with his time to come out and serve on NREC.
Sorry for being late, but late than never. Thank you very much. An honor to serve.
Good to see you here, sir. Take care.
All right. Thank you for that. And our next is second quarter financial report and mid-year budget amendment for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. I'm going to ask Director Ellis Chang to come up and answer questions, I suppose, of any council members that have questions. I will, I will start. We had Director Chang, a larger-than-expected increase in property tax revenue. And I'm wondering if you find that to be germane continuing as the housing market's slowing down quite a bit.
Typically, the impact to property tax revenue and sales tax revenue, the city tends to feel it about half a year to nine months in lag. So a lot of the housing turnover that happened last calendar year, we'll most likely see, start trickling in that increase and step-up in basis, which impacts ongoing property tax revenue. We'll most likely, we'll see the impact of it this fiscal year and next fiscal year. Any potential slowdown in housing, the housing market will probably start looking at hitting us towards the end of '23, '24, and into '24, '25.
And then the CalPERS returns, less-than-expected again?
Well, the CalPERS returns, remember, the gains that they experienced in '21 were offsets, more than offset by the losses sustained in '22, but the valuations are also impacting our financial statements a year in arrears as well.
I see. And then last but not least, I suppose, this is a question for our city manager. The homeless encampment cleanup costing us $150,000. That wasn't budgeted on our original assessment. Are we asking the County of Orange to help collaborate with us, or Caltrans to reimburse us on some of these cleanups?
So I can answer a couple of things. So there's two parts, two answers to that question. We do try to collaborate probably more with Caltrans than probably with the County of Orange, but we do collaborate with Caltrans. There have been some cleanups that they do in their right way. We also try to reach out to the railroads and some of the railroad properties. When I, as you're aware, I wasn't here for the development of the budget. I was here for the passage of the budget, but there was no money set aside for homeless encampment cleanups. I felt that that is an issue that we need to continue to do as we are also serving the homeless in another way. And so I felt that we needed to put money in there so that we could have consistent, so that we could address the concerns of the residents.
Understood. And with that, I'll bring this back to council for any other questions. Councilmember Zara, you have anything, sir?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, we're showing some positive signs, but we don't know how, I mean, there's obviously the inflation that contributed to an increase in revenue from sales tax. We don't know how long that will last. What I'd like, just to clarify that, you know, we did also achieve a balance in our budget and slight surplus, I believe, but that is because we maintained vacancies, correct?
There, for, if we're speaking about the prior fiscal year that ended in June of '22, expenditures came in a little under budget. We did have significant vacancy savings because we had a lot of turnover in staffing, and sales tax revenue also did pick up last fiscal year as well, back to close, I think, a little slightly above pre-pandemic levels. So we kind of saw some growth in that area as well. That was higher than anticipated.
So if, as we move forward in your projection, as you're looking forward, because I think we are beginning to hire, or at least hopefully we will be hiring to fill some of these vacancies, how do you think that's going to affect our budget moving forward?
Well, the budget is developed, assuming that we're going to be fully filled in all the positions. So the, but we did build in a slight vacancy factor last, that last year's budget for about a little bit, about a million dollars this year. So the likelihood for '22, '23 is we'll exceed that vacancy savings factor because of, you know, retention issues that the current, the city is currently in the process of overcoming. But we budget annually, assuming that there'll be some slight turnover in staffing, but the positions are budgeted as if they're all going to be filled.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Very well. Any other questions from council members? Councilmember Charles, anything?
No, I was expecting a longer break, so I apologize that I missed the first part of what you said, but I appreciate the summary in here. And I'm heartened to see that it looks like we're rebounding to pre-pandemic levels on all fronts and exceeding. Property values are going higher, and as sales decline, we might see a little bit of an issue with that, but certainly our property tax evaluations, I mean, if you compare now to 2019, it's honestly kind of scary for those of us that are trying to get into the market. But for those who are in it, I'm sure it's great. So, but thank you so much for the presentation, and we appreciate your continued good work on the budget.
Very well. Councilmember Donlap, anything, sir?
No comment, sir.
Very well. Mr. Mayor Protem, anything, sir?
Not really a question, but I did read with interest something that I had predicted some time ago. Talks about in the agenda report that during the second half of the fiscal year, and as property tax revenues to date are up by about $787,000, property tax revenues appear to be on track and may exceed adopted budgeted levels of $52.2 million. What interested me was the next sentence, which is, "The city has also benefited in recent years from an uptick in residual pass-through property tax receipts that have aided property tax growth. As successor agencies continue to pay down the obligations, those property taxes get distributed to the taxing entities. Property tax continues to be the city's most stable revenue, and also strong assessed valuation is playing into that. But some 10 years, more than 10 years since the dissolution of redevelopment agencies, we're seeing these formerly diverted property tax revenues restored to their original intent. And I think it's going to help bolster, still will probably be growing for several years. There was so much redevelopment debt that's been in the process of being paid off over time, and that was always the invisible part of the diversion of those property tax dollars." So it's good news to read that here. And the other thing that got my interest was transient occupancy tax. And I was looking for a quick or easy comparison or list of some of our neighbor cities or other Orange County cities similar size like City of Orange, what their total receipts for TOT revenue were. So without perusing each of their budgets, I was trying to find that, and it's been pretty elusive. But I'd be interested because the amount that we're showing now is 1.2 million, and I'm just wondering how that number compares with some other Orange County cities.
I think our hotel base is slightly smaller than some of the other surrounding agencies, so it's not as easy to compare apples to apples. But I think just with a lot of the tourism has kind of rebounded locally, we have seen additional improvement in TOT revenues as occupancy rates have clearly increased.
Well, I may have to take a little bit of time and do some of that research, but even relatively small neighbors like Placentia seem to be adding on a lot more capacity in terms of that revenue-building potential.
And Mr. Mayor Protem, as you know, our TOT tax is one of the lowest in the county as well.
Right. I just, I'm just wondering how low it is relative to.
In terms of percentage.
Oh, the TOT rates.
Not the rate, but the total amount of revenue.
I see. Yeah, the rate is low.
The rate does affect that, of course.
Yes, sir. There are two items to approve. Obviously, the financial
Obviously, the financial reports are receive and filed, but there are two items that we need to approve. It's the budget amendments, authorize city manager to make amendments to the 2022, 2023 adopted budget, as well as authorize and approve the addition of the one full-time equivalent grant-funded lieutenant position to the police department. So I'll make that motion if there's a second.
I would second.
Very well.
Public comment?
So we have two people registered to, sorry, I'm trying to put down who did the first and second. Two people registered to speak on this item in person.
Madam City Clerk, please.
First one is Bernard, and the second speaker will be Woderek.
Koma Jung, do you remember the deeper cuts you were fighting for? I still have yet to hear any talk from your mouth about restoring those cuts. How much longer are you going to punish our city staff? The ARPA bailout funds are gone. How do you plan to continue to not take accountability and cover up for your lies? Mr. Whitaker is on public record saying, "I don't like to plan, I just like to let things develop organically." He doesn't like to be prepared because, you know, the Cub Scouts saying, "Always let things develop organically and be reactive." Mr. Whitaker is also on public record saying, "Generating revenue is a magic idea." Dr. Charles, thank you for understanding how cities operate. These buffoons clearly don't. Do follow city policy or not to follow city policy. Whitaker versus Jung is like the equivalence of having the choice between a douchebag and a turd sandwich.
Hey, watch your language.
Hey, I am not your child.
Watch your language.
The way you talk to me.
Watch your language.
Watch your mouth.
Watch your language, sir.
Okay, Koma Jung. Go broom.
Extra public comment, please.
And our last speaker on this item is Woderek.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would like just to speak on if there is any plan or any measures in place to try to revamp our library. I love library, it's for education. Permit me to say this. Nelson Mandela, the then South African president, after the release from a long time, long period in prison, came to America in Boston on 23 June 1990 while addressing students at the, at the, the park, it's called, Madison Park in Boston, Manchester, Massachusetts. He said this, that education is the only weapon which we can use to change the world, not the police. Education is very key. Areas of education facilities, whether it's high school, whether it's elementary school, whether it's studying facilities like library, if the council can try to consider, find a way of how it can modernize. We have old computers there. They bring in new computers. Placentia brought new computers on Anaheim too. Bring new chairs there. If you stay there for long hours, if you have a back pain problem, because they are wooden chairs, if you stay there, they are not very much comfortable for long period of sitting. So if you can consider those, bring the coaches, make it modernized, make it new, that would be very good because I see you are doing good in the collection of revenue taxes on the staff. So that area, please give it first priority rather than the police. I know the police is there for safety, but the most important is education. Education is very key. They say, history say that Abraham Lincoln didn't have the normal education, but he changed the world. He brought the emancipation declaration, which ended the slavery, that appreciated the blacks are also human beings. So education is very key. I emphasize that the council, when they are working on the budget, they look at the areas of education. Bring books in the library. Equip it. Make it nice. Make it modernized in the modern era. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anything on Zoom? All right, very well. Madam City Clerk, you have a motion, a second, please call a rule.
Councilmember Charles.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye. Last item is the 2023 Safe and Safe Fireworks Sales. Madam City Clerk, you don't have a presentation, just.
I can make it a quick 30-second spiel if you like, since we've been, we're working on the fifth hour here in chambers.
Please.
I jokingly say it's February, so it's time for Groundhog's Day, Valentine's Day, and Fourth of July. It's time to start planning for fireworks. This is our 11th year of fireworks in Fullerton. The voters instated the sale, possession, and discharge of fireworks in Fullerton in November 2012. We have a rules and procedures of the process, which is in City Resolution 2022018. The fireworks process is a lottery for Fullerton nonprofit groups to apply. We do that every day that we have City Hall open in March, and then at our second council meet, your second council meeting in April, we do a drawing to select a new process as of last year. Five youth sports partner league groups to proceed to the permit phase, and then 10 permits, or 10 applications from the rest of the applications to also move on to the permit phase. You have an annual report in your packet that gives you all the nitty-gritty details of the process last year, what groups applied, what the fundraising looked like, from the financial reports, the process, some reports from police and fire on activity during the Fourth of July period. The sales for the fireworks are conducted July 1st through 4th, and just one highlight from the report, the community groups report net profits ranging from just under $4,500 to just a little bit over $41,000. So some put a little more work into it or get a better spot than others, I assume. The lottery application fee is $28. The permit fee for the 15 that move on to the actual fireworks sales is $2,326. The, both fees capture the cost for service for processing those fees, and in addition, the sales permit fee captures the cost for a fire suppression team, a fireworks safety team, and street sweeping and maintenance after the Fourth of July. Also in your report in your packet is a proposed timeline for 2023. If you approve this tonight, again, as we said, we would open the applications for all the days that City Hall is open in March. The drawing would be April 18th. The lucky 15 applicants will have until June 2nd to submit their fireworks sales permit application. Code Enforcement and Fire and the reseller, or the vendors, the wholesalers, will work on the inspections and putting the stands in place and getting everything ready for sales between July 1st and 4th. Stocks are moved on July 5th. The stands are gone by July 3rd, and then we get the financial reports on September 1st. So we're asking you to just receive and file the 2022 annual report and confirm this year's timeline.
Very well, thank you for that. Are there any public comments?
We have no comments.
All right, very well. Bring this back to council. We are confirming the timeline. The rest of it's a receive and file. If we could just do it, do we need a vote? Do we have our city attorney here? I suppose we should just take one.
I can play the city attorney, so why don't we?
It's all right. Let's just make a motion.
Move the item.
Very well, is there a second?
I second.
Very well. Madam City Clerk, please call a rule.
Councilmember Charles.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunlap.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Whitaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Jung.
Aye.
Thank you. I will start updating the applications.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next meeting is Tuesday, February 21st, same bad time, same bad channel, folks. Good night.